I, for some reason Zoom is coming up a little bit differently on my end. So I'm having trouble seeing all the panelists. Do we have a quorum of council members yet?
Yes, you do.
All right, great. If folks could turn on their cameras. Councilmember Dickinson, it looks like you're here. All right. So thank you all for joining us this evening. It is the October 5th. City Council meeting of the Louisville City Council. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. And because of COVID-19, the meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded during the meeting. People will have several, several places where you can participate. So please go ahead and look at the bottom of your screen. You'll see a raise hand icon. Or you can raise your hand by clicking that and then we can call on you. Also, if you'd like to dial in by phone, you can dial star nine and that will raise your hand as well. When I call on you, we'll unmute you and then please tell us your name and your address. And then tell us whatever you'd like to tell us. You'll have three minutes. So thank you so much for helping us to follow those rules so that we can maintain meeting decorum. And so with that, I'll ask the city clerk for a roll call. Mayor Stolzmann? Here. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Brown?
Second.
Councilmember Brown, I didn't hear you move it.
I moved that we approved the agenda.
All right. And there's a second from Councilmember Dickinson. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. That takes us to our first public comment period tonight, which is public comment on items that are not on our agenda or items that appear only on our consent agenda. If any members of the public would care to comment on something that's not on our agenda tonight or something on the consent agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand now. And first up, we have Jay Wilson, which I think may be our fire chief.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. John Wilson, Louisville Fire District, 895 Beatty away. I'm here to check in for my fourth quarter check in and safety talk. So can I answer any of your questions at this point?
I don't think we have any questions. Thank you for the excellent service and hanging in there during this really trying time. And we would love to hear your safety tip.
Okay, October 3rd through the 9th is Fire Prevention Week. This year's topic is learn the sounds of fire safety. What's that in the background? So the sounds that you just heard are from the smoke detector and from a carbon dioxide detector. It's a combination detector. So when you hear the beeps, that means that it's since it spoke and that you should leave the house. About one half of all house fire deaths occur between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So that's why it's really important to have smoke detectors in bedrooms, near your bedrooms and on each floor of your house. If it goes off, make sure that everyone gets out of the house and call 911. The carbon monoxide beeps are four loud beeps. And if you hear that, you should get out of the house and call 911 and we'll come to solve the problem hopefully. Now for the chirp that you'll hear, I can't, I can't produce that because it always goes off about 2:00 AM in the morning. And it's not 2:00 right now. So, but it means that your batteries need to be changed. So more the smoke detector is out of its life. It's about a 10-year lifespan. So with that, that's your safety talk for the quarter. So thank you very much for all of your hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed and we really do appreciate it from our district.
Thank you very much, Chief. It looks like Mayor Protem Maloney has a comment. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for being with us. I really liked your tip. Mine usually goes off at 3:00 AM when the batteries are out. The question I have is what about the elderly that we are concerned about getting on ladders, especially for second stories and replacing batteries? Is there some way that the fire department helps with that?
Yes, we do. So if they give a call to the firehouse with our non-emergency number, basically we'll come out and change out the batteries for them or install new ones for them also.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate you being with us today.
Talk about good service. Thanks, Chief. Thanks for that update. Any other members of the public today have a comment on an item that's not on our agenda or an item that's on our consent agenda? All right, seeing none, that takes us over to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion of consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The consent agenda is approved. That takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. I wanted to let everyone know I was cycling at lunch to clear my mind for the meeting today. And the great mural that's going on that Highway 42 underpass between the North End neighborhood and Kestrel is going in right now. So if you want to see it being painted, go check it out. She'll be there the next few days. And it already is looking really cool. Any other council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda? Seeing none, our city managers report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Nice to see everyone. I have no report other than to point your attention to agenda item six and the council communication associated with that, which is the Q3 2021 Economic Vitality Strategic Plan Scorecard. As you know, the strategic plan is reviewed at each of the Economic Vitality Committee meetings. And this report provides you all with the status of the recently completed items or items that are in progress that support the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan. So we have included the scorecard, a matrix with information on the status and then also the council work plan. And I'm happy to answer questions. Economic Vitality Director Megan Pierce is also on the phone and can answer questions if you have any.
Any questions from council members? I'm not seeing any. I just want to say I offline asked to see the marketing material. If you saw that in that update, it shows some different marketing materials being completed to put out about our city and Director Pierce sent that to me and it's phenomenal. It looks really great. So I'm excited to see what she's done in that area in particular to help with retail recruitment. So thank you very much to Director Pierce for that. Any other questions or comments on this agenda item? Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've said this before, but I'm going to say it again because I truly believe it. You know, this, this report, I think, really shows the alignment between the city council and economic vitality at the staff level. And it's something that, you know, I've been advocating for. I know other councils have been advocating for well over time. So we're in such good alignment. I really appreciate this. And it's down to the action level. It's down to the task level. You know, and I appreciate the work that my colleagues are doing in the EBC and working with staff. So I'm very excited about this and I think it's a very great tool. And it's something, not getting any questions mean that it's totally understandable and everybody's happy with that. That's my read. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Anything else on this one? All right. Thank you very much, City Manager Davis. And that takes us to our regular business this evening. And first up, we're lucky enough to get a presentation from our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. And I will turn it over to our consultants. I see Anthony on the screen. And so I'll turn it over to you, Anthony. Great to see you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Stolzmann. Great to see you and members of council. I hope all are enjoying this fall weather. The leaves are starting to turn and so it's a great time. Well, I am solo this evening. My partner Emily Shamsedine had another engagement. Unfortunately, she could not break, but I'm happy to present an update on behalf of the task force. Let me just get things together here. Technical difficulties. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes, we can. It looks great.
Great. All right. Well, again, my name is Anthony Graves. I serve as the Principal of Graves Civic Solutions. And my partner Emily Shamsedine from EST Consulting, you've also met. So just as a quick reminder for the public, the Louisville City Council created the Louisville EDI Task Force to provide advisory recommendations to the council with respect to community issues affecting Black, Indigenous and people of color and other marginalized communities. Since our last update to council, there had been two EDI Task Force meetings. One was held on August 19th and the other was on September 23rd. And the task force has been very busy. There have been a lot of discussions that have ensued. So in particular, we wanted to take some time this evening to update you on some of the feedback and outcomes of much of the task force engagement. So in particular, the task force selected research topics for five focus groups that Emily and I have conducted to inform our understanding of the BIPOC experience in Louisville. And of those focus groups, each of the task force members referred to us, individuals to participate in the focus groups. There were also members of the public who heard about the focus group opportunities who contacted us, who were added to the focus group opportunities. And so there were 23 people who participated in the focus groups. It was very diverse in terms of ethnic diversity with a substantial representation from the Latinx population and four of the five focus groups with the Latinx community being the largest, one of the largest ethnic minority groups in Louisville. There was also gender diversity within the group as well as the first gender identity. There were people who self-identified as being part of the LGBTQIA community. And there was age diversity as well. And so I think our youngest participant was, I want to say 12 or 13 years old. And the oldest participants were likely in their late 70s or early 80s. There were also people who were participating in the focus groups who identified as having a disability. And then in addition to the 23 individuals who participated in the focus groups, we also received email contributions, individuals who emailed us information about their lived experience, offered recommendations, disclosed things that maybe it may have happened to them within the city of Louisville. And then finally, we had a couple of follow-up phone call conversations as well. So one of the things that we'd like to note is that once we took time to conduct all of those focus groups, the EDI Task Force reconvened to filter through that information and really think through what the implications were. And so they discussed the information that came back from the focus groups and really assessed what the implications were for the community. And then they started to prioritize that feedback for your consideration. Because based on the RFP that you designed, you really asked that the EDI Task Force elevate for four or five issues for your consideration for future council action. Now, in addition to reviewing the public feedback and prioritizing that for your consideration, the task force members also had a forum to talk about their own lived experience. And you know, great care was taken to select the task force by members of the council president. And so we wanted to make sure to hear their voices and incorporate it in the feedback. Finally, we distilled it all into themes for your consideration this evening before presenting the final report in November. So just to frame our discussion this evening, because we recognize that this is sometimes difficult and emotional work, we think it's really important for us all to keep an open mind. And we really tried to ferret out an image here to kind of remind us all to take a deep breath, right? Not to take any of this feedback personally. This is a growth opportunity for the city of Louisville. And really, we're here to advance equity and inclusion, right, in our community. And so in order to do that, we have to take it in good stride. It's also important to note that this is just another data point in your journey. As you're making new policy, you're convening programmatic changes to create more opportunities for diverse communities here in Louisville. We also know that you've also got another excellent consulting team, right? That's working on the inside of your organization. And so you really need to look at this holistically and think through what the broad themes are across an array of data points. Finally, for any of you who have been involved in focus groups before, you know that focus groups are a snapshot, right? They're a point in time and you never know who's going to be in those meetings, all right? What their lived experiences, their perspective. And so there are certainly other perspectives, ideas out there than what was captured. But generally, even in the focus group with 23 participants over five different meetings, you're seeing some pretty clear themes emerge. So we want you to kind of keep in context that this is a snapshot of who is participating. But we still feel that it's representative of what's happening in the community based on the five different conversations with 23 distinctive perspectives. And then finally, sometimes focus group participants would make assertions or offer recommendations that perhaps were directed to the school system or to businesses in the Louisville community. Maybe not directly towards the city government, but this is all about the Louisville community. And we think there are a great deal of intersections between each of the perspectives offered. So with that, there were really five areas that were elevated by the task force. And we're going to go into detail in just a moment for you to take future action on. The first was around creating a safe and welcoming environment. And we really made language justice a through line for that focus area. The second was really focused on housing and housing access. So that includes things like affordable housing and really thinking about the intersection between housing or affordable housing access and diverse communities, right? Their ability to participate and be a part of Louisville. Third deals with public accommodation and access to services. So as you know, as a local government, you're really a service provider, right? You serve constituents and you offer city services to improve quality of life, right? And to have a functioning city government. And so there were questions raised regarding the efficacy and equality of those services based on the members of the focus groups who have participated. Youth engagement, that really appears to be a crowd favorite. That when we talk about the kind of arc of racial justice, we know it's a long game. And so thinking about how we engage, empower and, you know, influence the opportunities of our young people to engage in these conversations, we think it's very important. And finally, we recognize that health disparities exist. And sometimes when you talk about public health, the built environment can influence health outcomes. So we talked about this a bit in the early preview a couple of council meetings ago. So let's talk about safe and welcoming environment. And for each category, we talk about the issue and then the suggested end state or the desired end state and suggestions. So the final issue that's really emerged from the focus groups and from EDI Task Force discussions is that all of Louisville is a wonderful community with a really high quality of life, right? Where people really enjoy being a part of the community, enjoying amenities like the open space, right? And the small town environment. There was clearly an unspoken tension among communities of color who live, work or play in the city. And so we heard from numerous participants that there is an unspoken tension based on a range of experiences that people of color have had in Louisville. From culturally awkward moments to blatant disrespect by some neighbors, city staff and in public spaces. There have been unfortunately, some unwelcome and uncomfortable police interactions and a clear lack of cultural awareness that bridges from either insulting comments to even racist language that a number of community members have experienced in Louisville. Customer service, really, there's an opportunity to improve the way that people are engaged by Louisville staff, especially around cultural frames. And then there is a really clear theme around how an absence of diverse cultural identities reflected in public events and spaces makes people feel like they don't belong in the Louisville community. So where do we go from here? Proposed actions in the desired future state, really trying to strive for increased representation. What does that mean exactly? Well, numerous people talked about the power of public art and really trying to leverage public art to continue to reflect the diversity of the broader community. Activating events that celebrate different cultural holidays, right? And really draw in other cultural experiences to the festivities of downtown Louisville. Thinking through intentionality regarding BIPOC representation across city government and city services. So this goes to intentional hiring practices and thinking about representation on boards and commissions. We received a number of comments regarding branding the city as having embraced EDI as central to its identity, right? Being that open community that really invites in diverse perspectives, even as the demographics are changing within the city. There was clearly a recognition also that the troubled history of Louisville is not always named in the community. That there have been some difficulties, right? With the history of the Ku Klux Klan in the state of Colorado. And you know, the city of Louisville and the broader community is not immune from that difficult history. But the idea is that if we can name the troubled history and we embrace it through, you know, historical preservation and storytelling, that you can move on from that history and use it as a living, learning experience. Social programming, using music and events that reflect diverse communities. You know, there was a lot of conversation, for example, about salsa music, right? And sort of that lively cultural experience that comes with music and food. There was also broader conversation regarding how you curate safe spaces in your place making in Louisville. Perhaps through flags for various cultural identities or using also the pride or transgender flags in the community more openly. Moving on to the sub-theme or the through line of language justice. The issue here is that there's really insufficient Spanish language access and some deficits around services for the deaf concerning how people are engaged in Louisville. So it was widely reported that Spanish language communities are often disrespected, ignored or feel marginalized in the community. And that city services and communications are primarily available in English. I actually remember one particular comment from someone who was not Spanish speaking, who said that they were shocked, even as someone who did not speak Spanish, that there were so few Spanish language options available in Louisville, given the reflection of their neighbors and people who frequent the Louisville community. There's a lack of staff awareness of how to access translation services and other services around ASL or translation for people who require ASL translation. We were also quite impacted by a theme that emerged in numerous conversations across different focus groups about how children and other family members, friends and allies of the Spanish language community are forced to be language brokers, right? To translate in spaces since there's lack of official city services around, you know, multilingual access. And so a lot of people are feeling fatigue. And there's also some emotional trauma for children who are forced to translate for their parents in difficult situations. Wayfinding and instructions in public spaces, you know, stores and other places where services are rendered also seem to lack Spanish language access and translation. And then finally, across the different levels of the school system, elementary, middle and high school, there was broad awareness that there is a lack of Spanish language acumen and protocol awareness for translation in the school system. So looking forward, right? Moving on from the challenges and thinking through where we might take action. So really providing all city resources and communications in Spanish language really tips a hat to the Spanish language community and opens up a broader pathway for communication and communicating that people are accepted and welcome in the community. Training English-speaking staff, really all staff, on language access protocols. So I think that many constituents recognize that not everyone can speak another language other than English as their primary language. But city staff should be trained on what to do when you engage a constituent who requires language assistance. Creating bilingual wayfinding, also examining ordinances that encourage bilingual applications for housing and other services. We'll see that as a through line in just a few minutes, that one of the barriers to housing for diverse communities, especially the Spanish language community, is that lease terms and requirements for application are not always understood when people are seeking housing opportunities. Understanding ADA requirements as well. So we had a number of participants who identified as having a disability, some of whom may require wheelchair access or may be visually impaired. And so making sure that the city employees are well aware of what their responsibilities are under the law and that they are delivering on those responsibilities accordingly. Finally, understanding that there are limited resources but shared problems between the Louisville City Government and the school system, looking for clever ways to partner and share resources between the schools and Louisville. Or even looking more broadly across the region to other local governments with comparable communities. In the area of housing, the issue is that it's broadly perceived, given the very high cost of housing, right? That we're experiencing across the Denver metro area. But that the high cost of housing is an additional impediment to diverse participation in the Louisville community. And it creates a barrier to people feeling a part of the community, right? That they have an equitable shot at raising a family here and really soaking in all that Louisville has to offer. And so clearly, you know, the challenge of affordable housing is quite acute. Then there are systemic barriers that people perceive that they think are preventing people of color from homeownership. There's also a growing digital divide. And so with the digital divide, the language barrier and the high cost of housing, there seems to be compounding barriers that prohibit people from really accessing homeownership or even the ability to have an apartment in Louisville. Many who are priced out are now seeking affordable options in other neighboring cities, even if they're working in Louisville or going to school there. There's a lack of understanding as well about how affordable housing works. So it's broadly perceived that there's a stigma in the general public about affordable housing. And that perhaps looking at how to educate people around the benefits of having diverse communities and affordable housing points could be very helpful. Finally, you know, not having access to homeownership really, according to many, may help perpetuate the wealth gap. Especially as it pertains to diverse communities and perpetuates the cycle of poverty. May impact the mental health or well-being of children in the community and reflects a certain community value. So proposed actions that came out of the focus groups. A number of people talked about the importance, as I mentioned, of educating the community about affordable housing, how it works, the benefit to the larger community. Requiring all rental, rental properties to have Spanish access or applications, wasting paperwork, loan paperwork, maybe for lenders, anything that creates a pathway to homeownership. So that there are more points of access for Spanish language communities. Increasing the percentage of affordable homes allocated in new developments. So as you are making tough decisions about where to expand housing stock, ensuring that there is a real conversation about the number of units that are offered. It was also mentioned that we might consider as a city government, private funds that could be used for undocumented residents or people who are quote documented, right? There are also a number of mixed status households that may be having difficulty accessing housing because of their status. Finally, assessing housing options and programs for foster children as the age out of the system. Is there a couple of reported incidents of children leaving foster care in the Louisville community, not really knowing where to go or how to address the housing issue? Finally, thinking through hiring practices and increasing representation in systems that are connected to housing. Concerning the area of public housing, or excuse me, public accommodation for access to services. Many believe that there is inequitable access and poor customer service delivered by the city of Louisville and other entities, including area businesses and schools. And so the barriers for non-English speaking people in the deaf community at schools, grocery stores, I heard the post office and other places, areas where you have to pay bills or seek assistance. Non-English speakers and deaf residents are often treated with disrespect or dismissed by city staff and recreation centers or other places where city services are offered. And it was also noted that in some cases, it feels like the infrastructure is disjointed around low-income communities that border or provide access to services, perhaps like playgrounds. So what might the future state look like based on these focus groups? It was noted that it would be great to have guidelines, protocols and training to help city service providers become better equipped to help those facing language barriers in Louisville, to enhance customer service training and ensure dignified and equitable treatment of all residents and guests regardless of economic status, race or language needs. Assessing, of course, processes and ensuring that each service provider understands the guidelines and laws around ASL services and the needs of other people who are either low income or identifies having a disability. And then thinking about how we could increase hiring of employees that are culturally competent and excel at great And then thinking about how we could increase hiring of employees that are culturally competent and excel at great customer service. Okay, as we get towards dinnertime, I know this photo makes me really hungry. And so hopefully the saliva glands are kicking in as we talk about public health. So the issue is that there are points of failure around access uh to to fresh food and other elements. So it was noted that first, people who may have a disability or those who do not have vehicle access who are bus dependent, they have less access in Louisville uh for important services. And also for accessing things like food banks in the city, if they're looking to supplement uh any income or or food access that they currently have. And it was further reported that for uh several individuals who are using food banks and we heard from people and I think at least three of the five focus groups who are patrons of local area food banks. A number of people talked about poor food quality uh currently in some of the area of food banks, right? And that not having access to fresh fruit, vegetables and meats is problematic uh for low income communities. There are also limited or inaccessible hours for city services that are impactful disproportionately to low income families or diverse communities. Poor staff awareness about how to engage low income residents who may be using um various services like WIC uh to to navigate the city. And so also burdensome hours, uh you know, there there were a number of single parents who talked about wanting more weekend hours, right? For communities like pools and other activities. Uh, the list continues of issues that were raised in this focus group. So childcare, I think for for all of us is always an issue, right? But I think that if you are uh low income or work a couple of different jobs, that that's quite acute. And so thinking through how you can help mitigate that stress level uh for communities of color uh who may be looking for childcare on weekends and wanting to use the rec centers and other amenities. Uh, it was noted earlier that there appears to be some infrastructure inequity, uh in particular in around, I guess, the one mobile home park that you have in Louisville. It was noted that street quality sidewalks and lighting quality, street lights uh may also be inequitable compared to other areas in the city that have higher income levels. Uh, someone raised this question of snow removal and other elements that maybe uh are are not well managed in pockets of the city. Perhaps between other contiguous jurisdictions or or Boulder County. And so it it was noted there may be some areas for improvement. Also, for people who provide healthcare services, it it seems like there are very few providers that accept Medicaid. In the area in and around Louisville, which makes provider choice very limited for people. They have to go outside of the community to seek Medicaid supplemented services. And then finally, it was noted that there's lim- limited mental health access as well. So what might the future state look like? Expanding weekend hours and childcare uh to really serve low income and other communities, which has some intersectionality with diverse communities in Louisville. Conducting an infrastructure disparity audit across the city to ensure that there is parity and capital improvement planning. Fund delivery services for food banks to low income communities. And also thinking through how farmers markets in the area can participate in low income family programs like Snap Bucks. Double up WIC bucks and veggie bucks just to diversify the number of options. So for the farmers markets, uh everyone feels that they have points of access. Working with local healthcare systems to try to expand Medicaid offerings in the area. Uh, adding lighting around parks, uh especially around the Brymar Mobile Home Community. And then conducting an equity audit of city services concerning how amenities are provided and the activities that are given to the general public. I hope that you uh recognize and appreciate this mural here on the bottom. Uh, this is one of my daughter's favorites, by the way, and walking through the the Louisville community. Especially now as we're getting close to Halloween, all right, uh with the colors and so forth. So uh we chose this this slide really for youth engagement. So the issue is that there's a lack of meaningful youth engagement opportunities and especially around culturally responsive education uh in Louisville. And so there are not a lot of structured youth activities that are sponsored by the city currently to advance EDI. And also engaging non English speaking families, right, going back to this language disparity issue. There there are a lot of English language teachers that have to share that burden. And then the children of those families are often caught in that pinch as language broker. There's really kind of an unsupportive culture and environment for Spanish language parents in the community. So how how are Spanish language parents engaged uh regarding the needs of their children in the Louisville community? Right? What does that communication and outreach look like? And then what is their their point of engagement when they're seeking services and clarification in the city uh regarding issues that impact their children? And as noted earlier, actually, we we had youth, like a couple of different um youth participants in the focus groups who talked about the difficult history of Louisville and wanting to really grapple with that and have discussions about it uh right with class, with with their classes and with the youth in their community. And looking for ways to name it, right, that that difficult history. So here are the proposed actions, uh as I think you're you're well on your way uh to do this. Really re-engaging the Youth Advisory Board and looking for that EDI nexus to create programming and opportunities for students. Young people to engage in these issues, right, and to be part of the solution. Really also engaging with schools so that young people have a role in advancing EDI. But engaging with schools and partnership opportunities that don't place the burden on teachers exclusively. Right? Uh, my my mother was a teacher growing up, and so I I know well that there's often a lot asked of our teachers. So a couple of teachers also noted that in these focus groups. Celebrating and learning about other cultures, righteous such as Diwali, Hanukkah, Chinese New Year, MLK, et cetera, through museum activation. Festivals, newsletters, thinking about your public spaces like the library, which actually is doing a pretty good job uh by many reports. Um, as well as direct centers, et cetera. Activating city spaces to help cultivate these experiences and then working with schools to develop a more equitable process for non English speaking families. So that was a lot. Thank you. I'm getting a little uh tongue twisted here and trying to walk through both the feedback, like the the critical constructive criticism and some of the recommendations that came directly from the community via the focus groups. Now I'd like to talk to you about some of the recommendations that are coming from the task force. Right? Just to kind of separate it out just a smidge. So uh the the task force has asked, among other things, and more uh recommendations will come in the formal reporting that's coming this next month. But here are just a couple of highlights. To create an EDI manager or deputy position with appropriate support, uh resources and decision making power. Uh, making the EDI task force a permanent city commission or create a comparable structure that can continue dialogue in Louisville and create safe spaces and and conversation places uh for diverse communities. Hosting regular feedback meetings with BIPOC and other marginalized communities to help assess EDI efforts. Just a note here, while we were conducting the focus groups and even in connecting with the EDI task force. It was it was clear that there was a a sense of connection and relief for communities of color uh who had been given this platform to have a conversation about how it felt to be a person of color in Louisville. And there was a great deal of appreciation that was expressed, right? To say, wow, like, we really appreciate that the Louisville City Government is creating this platform for us to have candid conversations about our experience and build community around it. Because building community, having safe spaces, other places where you feel uh welcome and be of an equitable place is very important to the individuals who informed uh the the conversations we've had. It was also noted that revising city ordinances or the charter with an equity lens to think about compensation uh for something like the EDI task force for historically marginalized and disenfranchised communities uh for participation. So thinking about barriers to participation, right? There are some individuals who maybe will not be able to attend a task force meeting in the middle of the day because they're working a couple of jobs or they're supporting a family. It was also noted that you use, well, somebody cited in particular the Government Alliance on Racial Equity, which you're a member of, to use their racial equity tool to assess if city services are equitable across all neighborhoods. So earlier we talked about really a infrastructure parity audit or equity audit to see if you're doing capital improvements in an equitable way across the city. The same can be said for other city services. So concerning next steps, uh where we kind of go from here as we dig deeper and prepare the final reporting uh for you, the council to consider on behalf of the EDI task force. We are, we're going to start now drafting and pulling together all of the uh candid feedback, you know, many of the correct direct quotes from the community. Going deeper on the themes that we've reported today and going next level concerning specific recommendations and opportunities, both reported and not reported uh in this quick summary. And by Monday, October eighteenth, we're going to send the first draft report to the EDI task force for review. And get any amendments that they may have, since really they own this report. You know, again, they set the focus group areas, they've reviewed the content and prioritized the themes for your discussion. So of course, of course, they're going to finalize the report uh for you. Uh, then there's going to be follow up one on one conversations that we, the consulting team, have with each individual member of the EDI task force. We think it's very important to have numerous portals for conversations and to ensure that each task force member has the space and the comfort level to share any final thoughts on their minds about the report or this experience. Finally, by the twenty eighth, uh we have our last task force meeting where the task force will be asked to ratify that report for release to you, the Louisville City Council. And then on November first, if you will have us back, we'll come back and present to you the final document and answer any questions that you may have. And then finally, we'd love to wrap with a appreciation event uh with Louisville City Council and would love to invite uh the, of course, the task force and of course, the entire city council. So with that, Mayor Stoltzman, thank you for your patience in walking through that uh information. What questions may I answer for you in the council?
Anthony, thank you so much for the presentation and the layout um to get the constructive feedback and the criticisms and where we're falling short, but then to follow each with a suggestion or a path. Uh, that's a really nice way of trying to think about the positive side of like, well, how can we do better and how can we get to work on this? So thank you very much for the approach uh that you've taken in the presentation. It helps um to be able to take in that kind of very serious feedback to at least see that that there's a light at the end of the tunnel and some uh corrective measures we can take. And some of them are even really things we can start right away um and short term me- measures. And some of them are really challenging longer term things that we need to get to work on. Um, but I just want to thank you for the layout and providing us with this feedback. And of course, to thank the the members of the committee and the focus groups for really opening up and helping us to understand uh better about their lived perspective. Other council members have questions or comments? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh thank you, Anthony, for the work that you've done on this. Um, it's been really um just exciting to have you uh helping to steer us through this. Uh, I really want to thank uh the members of the EDI task force, obviously, for their hours and hours of work. Uh, and for everyone who participated in the focus groups. I think, you know, uh candidly, some of this feedback is difficult to hear. Um, but it's doesn't mean that it's not correct, and it doesn't mean that isn't something that we need to hear. Um, and so, you know, personally, as a council member, I I really look forward to um, you know, utilizing the recommendations of this of this task force. Um, the things that we can do to 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 improve the work that we do to make Louisville a more inclusive community. Um, and I look forward to seeing the final report and the final recommendations from everyone. So um with that, you know, uh that it'll be my commitment to, you know, to continue to work on uh the recommendations. So uh, thanks, thanks so much again for for everyone and and Anthony, thanks for a great presentation.
My pleasure, Councilor Brown. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes, good evening, Anthony. We're really happy that you are here and appreciate the presentation. Um, and a little bit kind of giving us a foretaste of the the uh report to come and and some of the kinds of recommendations that you're working on right now or that the task force is. Want to thank everybody on the task force. I think we all really appreciate the tremendous time. And I I think I want to harken back to one comment that I think you you made uh as we were going into this, which is that the people in this task force really in um, you know, it's one thing to just sort of come in and provide a little bit of expertise and here and and that kind of thing. Some of these stories are incredibly painful. And I think you have challenged people appropriately uh to put some of that on the table as they've gone through the the task force experience and share it. Um, that is the tremendous benefit to us. And it is, it comes at cost to some of the people who've participated. And I hope that you can convey uh something on my behalf and on my bet is others in council. Probably concur with this, that we really appreciate the folks putting themselves out there because that's a lot of that's a lot of effort. I think the other um thing that I would say is to the extent that it's possible um to as you're going through the final stages of this to provide some examples, not necessarily um in huge detail, but sort of the you know, one example of this would be this, this is the kind of experience. I think that's really helpful um at making use of the kind of experience that people sharing without um making it too, um, I mean, I, the point is not to to call people out, right? On those experiences, it's more to help the experiences to become maybe real for the people who are reading through the recommendations and saying, oh, you know, and some people are going to get it, some people won't, but they'll probably get it more with concrete examples if that's possible to include. Obviously, you're you're the expert on this and we appreciate all of what you've done. Um, so thanks again.
If I might just respond, so Councilor Lee, first, thank you for recognizing that it's very difficult uh for people to share their lived experience, especially when it is a traumatic experience. And even within the EDI task force and the focus groups, we had to really take some time to set the tone and make people comfortable for them to discuss uh some of the experiences that they have had in the community. It really takes tremendous courage to share those experiences. And as you sit in the decision making seats, it takes some courage to ask people to share their actual experience, right, and then to mount an appropriate response. And so thank you for that. And then certainly, uh we will absolutely cite some specific experiences in the report as well as a number of direct quotes, right? And of course, all of it will be anonymous uh for anybody who's listening currently in the community. But thank you, uh Councilor Lee, for recognizing that.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, thank you, Anthony, for a great presentation, obviously, more importantly, for the work you've been doing um with us and for us um over these last few months. Um, you know, I I think what what I'm noticing the most as as you're going through all those different topics is just um you know, how how um complicated the solutions are and how um how many players there are in in moving towards, you know, um a a better community and you know, as as you prefaced, you know, some of it's school districts have, some of it's individual teachers, some of it's our staff, some of it's our policies as a council, some of it's representation on the boards and commissions and council itself. And um, you know, so I'll be very interested to see the the final recommendations, but you know, trying to figure out what, you know, what my um role as a councilperson is in in being a part of um taking some some steps to um make things better uh in the short term and long term. And so I um, you know, I think it was really helpful to get to some of those um strategies and and um, what'd you call it? The um
You desired future state.
The future state, that was it. Um, the the future state, right? Um, and that's, I think that's a really um great way of of articulating it, that that it isn't just about the things we're going to do, but where we're trying to get to and and what that future state could look like. So um, yeah, I I'm I'm really looking forward to it. And thank you so much for all the effort.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, everyone. That takes us over to a public comment on this topic. If any members of the public would care to comment and add anything in on this topic, go ahead and raise your hand at this time. And if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and tell us what you'd like to tell us. All right, seeing no one, that takes us back over to council questions and comments. Any other council discussion on this topic? Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, you know, Anthony, I think you're probably having these kinds of discussions already, but our boards and commissions are um are up for uh appointments. I mean, there'd be people applying for appointments. Uh, they're due, I think, November eighth is when the applications are due. And we don't need to talk about this sort of directly now, but I would encourage. You to reach back to Megan and others if you have some suggestions. For us right now in real time to help with encouraging folks to. Apply for those positions. I would love to to hear how to be able to. To start in on that before there's even recommendations in the harbor because. Representation is really important, trying to get people in those positions is great. And maybe even some of the people on the task force would be interested in doing it, but. There may be some ideas that that we can, that we can take up that will help them.
Thanks, Councilmember Lee, and I just want to turn it to City Manager Davis, just to tell us a little bit. I know they have already been taking some of the recommendations and. I know the city manager changed our application slightly and is doing some other steps, so I just want to give her a chance to let us know what she's already thinking about.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Councilmember Lee, for the for the question. Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of things. First, we we have circulated the. The board and commission opportunities with the EDI Task Force and asked them to share it with their networks and. Of course, encourage them if they're interested to take a look at those opportunities, but we would really be open if. Anthony and Emily have other recommendations for us and kind of getting the word out a little bit more. We'd be happy to do that. And as the mayor mentioned, one of the things that we've done since we actually did the initial EDI Task Force. Appointments and seating process is we've made some modifications to our actual application for boards and commissions. So that we're not including some of the demographic information that we've included previously and we're. You know, we're basically kind of streamlining it so that people can apply and we will have. You know, information about their qualifications, their experience in terms of what they are interested in and what they kind of bring to the conversation. Versus having information necessarily about, you know, where they live and, you know, their their gender or how they identify and those types of things. So. We're trying to make some of those to really encourage people to be involved. We've removed the background check. Requirement piece. And so these are some things that we think will eliminate some of those barriers. That we have actually heard from folks when they apply to participate. So that we can encourage all residents to be involved if they're interested.
Thanks, City Manager Davis, and I'll turn it to Anthony if he has anything to respond in addition to Councilmember Lee.
Sure. So just a couple of quick things there. I think it's really important. By the way, first, let me express my appreciation to. City Manager Davis and and to Meredith for all of the support and their leadership. Right in working closely with us as we serve the needs of the EDI Task Force. Your your staff has. Always gone above and beyond to make sure that your constituents have the experience that they deserve, right, around this work. And then to Council Lee, your question about getting the word out. I think it's very important as well to use a network of other organizations in the community, cultural organizations. Service nonprofits, others that have broad networks, right, within diverse communities. Faith organizations, right, for diverse communities are a great way to go. The United Way. Other organizations that you know are going to have numerous touch points with various communities. It's always quite helpful. Professional organizations as well that tie to different communities. So I think that it's important to think broadly and understand that it does not have to be very targeted. It doesn't have to be just within. The the four corners of the city of Louisville. It can be within Boulder County. Or in the metro area. It's amazing how many people have crossroads through your community. Who who you may not be kind of reaching out to, but are connected. So would you like me to make a couple of closing remarks here, Mayor, or?
Please, thank you. That would be great, Anthony.
Great. Well, first, let me thank you all for your commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion. It is remarkable. That as leaders in your community, you made the decision to stand up the infrastructure to launch this task force to hear from your community. And that is, that is an incredible first step. So you all should be very proud of the direction that you have set. And you should feel great about the leaders that you put in place at the EDI Task Force who have really taken this this task very seriously. And hearing from the community and elevating their needs and now in offering some recommendations for how you can go forward. On behalf of Emily and I, we wanted to thank you so much for the opportunity to be involved and we look forward to delivering the final report to you in November.
Thank you very much for that presentation this evening and just making sure any council members have any final remarks they might need to make. All right, seeing then, we just owe you a big debt of gratitude. Thank you very much and please pass our thanks on to your colleague as well. And so that takes us through this topic this evening. And our next topic for the night is the Foundry General Development Plan and Subdivision Agreement. First, we'll take these things together, but the two topics are ordinance number eighteen fifteen, series twenty twenty one. An ordinance approving a seventh amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan to allow up to fifty nine dwelling units and fifteen thousand square feet of commercial development. This is our second reading and public hearing as advertised in the Daily Camera on nine twelve twenty twenty one. And we'll also be taking up resolution number seventy, series twenty twenty one, approving a second amendment to the Foundry Subdivision Agreement. To remove the requirement for the occupancy by persons of fifty five years of age and older. I'll open the public hearing and ask council members if they have any disclosures on this topic. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Lisa Ritchie. She's our senior planner and she can take us through a presentation.
Mayor, Lisa and I had some computer issues. We're back up. She needs about thirty seconds to get herself on if you want to.
Excellent. Sorry about that. Everybody, we're just having a few technical details tonight, and so we will wait just about thirty seconds so that Planner Ritchie can come back in and get her presentation up and running. I'll just use this time while Lisa's getting set up to let everyone know who's participating that we'll have a presentation. From our planner and then we'll get some information from the applicant if they would care to give a presentation. And then we'll take public comment for the first time, followed by council questions and comments. And then we'll have a second round of public comment. And an opportunity for the applicant to give closing statements and then I'll close the public hearing. So that's the course in action for the evening. And just in case anyone's wondering, the record includes all of the packet materials, our city codes and laws and things like that. And the addendum to the packet and those materials are all posted online next to the meeting link. So you can see all the material that council is considering for the public hearing. And we'll see if I stalled long enough to give Planner Ritchie time to be able to log in. I see her name, but I don't see her camera icon.
Yeah, I'm just, hold on, I'm promoting her right now.
Excellent.
I think she's just about here.
She's listed twice in my panel now, so twice is good.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. My apologies, our internet in power is having issues in certain parts of town, so. You know, one minute while I pull up my screen. Thank you for your patience. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes here.
I'm just glad you were able to recover so quickly.
Oh, man. Don't want to do that right now. All right, here we go. All right. So thank you for the introduction. Tonight you are here to consider the Seventh Amendment. To the Dakota General Development Plan as well as the Second Amendment to the Foundry Subdivision Agreement. The proper notice was met per all municipal code requirements. Little bit of background, as you all know, the property is at the southwest corner of Pascal Drive and Highway forty two in the far north. Portion of the city. And so immediately north of this property is the city of Lafayette. For a little bit of background, the property is just under six acres, its own planned community zone district, along with the larger area of the Dakota General Development Plan. In two thousand sixteen, the city approved a GDP amendment along with what we commonly call the Foundry, PUD and plat. That authorized up to just shy of thirty two thousand square feet of commercial development. Thirty two dwelling units with twenty four of those required for occupancy by ages fifty five and older. As well as a concurrency requirement to build all of the commercial with residential. In twenty nineteen, city council extended the PUD to April of twenty twenty. And reduced the concurrency requirement to require. Only fourteen thousand, so essentially one of the two buildings of the commercial development. And for a little bit of context, if we need to come back to this, this was the. Previous foundry development site plan. And so you can see it had four buildings with residential units, three stories tall. Those fronted Calix Avenue and then the commercial development fronted Highway forty two. So here we are tonight. Obviously, as you know, that property was not developed under that previous plan. Properties under contract by the applicant and they have evaluated the market and kind of their desired path forward. And hence have submitted a GDP application. Essentially, this would reduce the maximum commercial development to fifteen thousand square feet. Whereas I did mention the previous PUD authorized just shy of thirty two thousand. This, the GDP actually authorizes up to seventy six thousand square feet of commercial. So they would be doing a maximum of fifteen. They'd be increasing the residential units to fifty nine from thirty two. From an access perspective, they'd be revising access from Calix Avenue to one way in. In order to try and reduce impact on neighborhood traffic on Calix for the existing neighborhood. Request to remove the requirement for the occupancy limitations by persons fifty five years of age and older. They have reduced the overall maximum building height for all buildings to thirty feet from thirty five. And then there were other revisions to the lot width and lot size standards. And for context, this is not under consideration tonight. We're just talking about the GDP, but the applicant has provided a conceptual site plan. That shows how they intend at this time to move forward on the site. So they'll talk about this a little bit more, but. Again, we're not reviewing this for compliance against the code. This isn't under consideration. But this does illustrate kind of the density, the number of units you could fit on the site. As well as kind of how they they anticipate moving forward into a PUD. PUD would have to go through the the public process again prior to approval and issuance of building permits. First thing we're going to look at a little bit is traffic. So as you can see, there's four primary access points. Into and out of the site. The trip distribution is shown on here. And so from a neighborhood perspective. Roughly eleven percent of the trips would be accessed off of Calix Avenue. Over here. And so really that is just a one way in. It wouldn't allow folks to exit the site that way. The majority of the trips are going to access from a right in, right out access off Highway forty two. As well as from the south here on Summit View Drive. And so you can see as well just the comparison of the existing and proposed traffic numbers. And so this GDP is fairly similar to the current PUD when you look at actual average daily trips. But obviously less than what would be allowed in the current GDP. For a little bit of context here, the foundry site is not shown, but it's this vacant property up here in the corner. So relative to density in the neighborhood, we we wanted to show you this for comparison. So the, these are the neighborhoods as well that we evaluated in our fiscal model. So you can see. The comparison neighborhoods that we're looking at. And so really, the density ranges here anywhere from about twenty four dwelling units per acre for the North Main Apartments. Dropping all the way down to three point two dwelling units an acre for the single family homes within Steel Ranch. So there's certainly a range. Of existing densities in the neighborhood. And so, you know, this applicant, one of the other things that they've done in their proposal is they've amended the concurrency requirement. So this project as proposed on the GDP, it would be a requirement that runs with the land on the GDP. Ultimately results in one hundred percent concurrency. So sixty percent of the residential permits would be authorized with construction. Of fifty percent of the commercial permits and then the final forty percent of the residential with the final fifty percent of the. Commercial permits. And as we mentioned before, the previous PUD required only one of the two commercial buildings and those sizes were either roughly fourteen thousand. Or roughly eighteen thousand square feet with no requirement for completion of the second building. The applicant, the previous applicant at that time submitted building plans for the fourteen thousand square foot building. They never submitted plans for that larger building. One of the things Councilor Lipton asked for was just a little bit more. Context into the commercial and residential developments in the surrounding area. And so really, we kind of looked up here at the northwest area of the city. And so I can talk about these a little bit. Numbers one, two and three are located within Louisville. The remainder are all within Lafayette. And so really, there are a number of other developments that are, you know, probably a little less certain in the entitlement stage in Lafayette. But I really tried to find ones that were either under review in Louisville or kind of fully entitled within Lafayette. So within Louisville, we have the North End Market. It does at this point have a PUD which has lapsed but is under review. For some development that includes both residential dwelling units and commercial square footage. Same thing with Coal Creek Village in Louisville, South Boulder Road and Highway forty two. Again, existing PUD was approved but has since lapsed. And so they are under review. We won't talk about that a whole lot. And finally, within. Louisville, we have the DLO West, formerly known as the DLO Lofts Project. Again, expired PUD or lapsed PUD and some application here for residential units along with some modest commercial. Within Lafayette. We can talk about these a little bit more. So probably the the closest development to the site, which I should have mentioned, the site is outlined in red. And so you can see for context, there the foundry site is outlined in red. The Indian Peaks Market Place is directly across the street north. North of this site on Pascal Drive. They've been approved for up to sixty four dwelling units and fifty five thousand square feet of commercial. That project is not under construction. The fifth one is what Louis or Lafayette's calling Galt Plaza, allows up to twenty seven dwelling units and twenty two thousand square feet of commercial. Not sure exactly where this one is, if it's in building permits or what, but it does appear to be fully entitled. Within Lafayette, again, some of you may have seen the city center project going up, this behind Lafayette City Hall. So that's two hundred dwelling units and sixteen thousand square feet of commercial. The largest residential development we have an area that's going on is the Silo Project Number Seven. So that's up on baseline just west of two eighty seven. And that allows up to four hundred and seventy eight dwelling units with roughly twenty thousand square feet of commercial there. And then finally, the largest commercial development we have is along the two eighty seven corridor. In Erie, actually, in this case, the Nine Mile Corner. It'll, they're going to be constructing two hundred and ninety units as apartments and then at least. More than two hundred thousand square feet of commercial development is planned for that. And so from a market perspective. You know, I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about the details of the commercial to, commercial market. But you can see particularly along the South Boulder roadside and Highway forty two. That the numbers for commercial development are smaller certainly than alone two eighty seven, which speaks. A lot to traffic volumes and where population growth is occurring.
Lisa, can you go back to the last slide?
Sure.
Can you explain why you've only put the units that haven't been built yet? Like there, these are like North End Market is a part of a much larger general development plan. That had planned commercial and residential that has built a number of residential units, but not the commercial piece. So like.
Very, yeah, very.
Number eight, for example, that you have listed here is like the entire development, not just the part that's not built. So we have no idea. How much of that won't get built in ten years, right? But like, we know. On the ones you've listed in Louisville, like you've listed partial developments. So can you explain that?
No, I think that's a very fair question. So, you know, my understanding of Councilmember Lipton's question was kind of what is still to come and what is the market doing here? If I had had probably more time, I could have rounded this out a bit more, but you are right. This is development that has not yet occurred. It does not reflect. Development that is either partially complete or, you know, for example, for North End, you're right, I'm not accounting for the dwelling units. That were in North End existing and I'm also not accounting for kind of the change over time. So, you know, what maybe North End was factoring in. When they very first were entitled and what they've amended to at this point. So now this is really just kind of what's actively entitled, what's actively being under construction. Or under review, under review in Louisville or kind of actively entitled within kind of what would be this market area. So no, this isn't intended to represent. Kind of a complete market analysis. In in that way. I certainly, we could do more research for you if that's helpful, but fair question.
Thanks for the clarification.
Sure. So the first thing we look at this, you know, with the with the fiscal analysis, I'm going to talk quite a bit about the fiscal analysis. I have three slides for you on this. But we wanted to analyze kind of a number of different scenarios or build-out scenarios here for you. So the high scenario is the first one we'll talk about. This assumes full build-out of the project within the timeframe kind of specified by the applicant. We can talk about that at current market conditions and market rates for cost of construction and assume it's going to be occupied by, you know, folks, financial means on, you know, where we assume kind of a like, a like development would the the type of household income, I guess is what I'm going to say here. So from, you can see what we compared were two kind of localized scenarios and then two more neighborhood-wise. So the first two are the current foundry PUD, which is the one that was approved that but not constructed. So again, the thirty-two thousand square feet and the twenty-four dwelling units. You can see that that does have a, you know, average annual in net impact of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars a year. Next, we're looking at the proposed foundry GDP. So that again is just the the fifty-nine dwelling units and the fifteen thousand square feet of commercial. So that does, it is positive, albeit, you know, just barely at roughly two thousand dollars a year. And then next, we looked at the broader neighborhood. And so you may remember from the slide previously where I showed the neighborhoods with the different colors and their densities. Those are the neighborhoods that we included within Dakota for the purposes of this analysis. And so what we really wanted to see was, you know, in either scenario, back in the very beginning when this was planned, which I do want to note that the seventy-six thousand square feet of commercial that's currently on the the current GDP is the highest commercial development amount that was ever in place. So that would have been the highest amount of commercial. So we really wanted to look at all of the potential development there. And so, but both of those scenarios essentially are negative. And so even with seventy-six thousand square feet of commercial, or excuse me, we'll get to that one, with the current PUD, sorry, with the thirty-two thousand square feet of commercial, that would be negative in both scenarios. So the current GDP as well as the proposed GDP. Secondly, sorry for the confusion on this. I do want to explain it a little bit, but I know it's there's a lot of information on these slides. The low scenario, what we did here, because again, with the proposed foundry GDP, it does result in full build-out because of the concurrency requirement that's embedded within the GDP. We lengthened out the build time. And so we kind of run out that clock with less commercial development as well as we reduced by eighty percent kind of the market value on the cost of construction in there. And so at that point, that's why you see the foundry proposed GDP go negative. Because again, while full build-out, we've lengthened out that commercial construction and the subsequent residential and reduced the values. We reduced the values then for the current foundry PUD. So the one that's in place now, we assumed only one building got built. The second one did not get built. It's still positive, albeit much less. And then you see the similar reflection in the total neighborhoods with the negative condition being more severe. And finally, we modeled what we call the ultra-high scenario. So this leaves kind of the proposed foundry GDP and the neighborhood numbers the same, but what we did here was model in if the seventy-six thousand square feet of commercial was built. And so you can see in that case, you know, the positive, that's the current foundry GDP then. So the the column on your left, you can see the positive column there. You know, is substantially higher from a fiscal impact. But even in that condition, the neighborhood overall is still negative. So I know that that's an important information for council when they were considering kind of what was the original intent and would we ever have achieved, you know, positive fiscal balance, even if the GDP had been fully built out as contemplated and based on the numbers and the assumptions we ran. In every scenario, the neighborhood is negative. Next, we look at kind of what policies we have in place in order to support approval of the GDP. And so first of all, we looked at our comprehensive plan for consistency there. And we do find that the plan meets the comprehensive plan policies provides office and neighborhood-serving retail, provides higher density housing and proximity to the highway. This one, you know, does have the concurrency requirement, provides a mix of housing types and pricing. It is visibly positive in that high scenario. Further, we looked at the small area plan and that small area plan further supports the mix of office, retail and residential uses. Small area plan does talk about lower heights within proximity to the corridor. Although there is allowance for, you know, both one and two-story buildings. Just depends on kind of how and where. And so the GDP is responding to the small area plan by reducing that maximum height to thirty feet. However, you know, all of the allocation of the height and the final heights are not on the table at this time. That would be reviewed through the PUD process. And with that, we are recommending approval of ordinance eighteen fifteen. And my apologies, I didn't go back and look at the packet to update the resolution number. So that ordinance is what would approve the general development plan amendment. And the resolution is what would amend the subdivision agreement to remove the restrictions for age limitation. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And the applicant has a brief presentation for you as well.
Thank you, Planner Richie. And we'll turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Got it.
Hi, good evening. This is Brian Bear with Mass Equities. My address is seven five five two North Eighty-third Street in Longmont. Wanted to just go through a quick presentation and then open it up for questions. I'll I'll try not to be redundant with what Lisa presented, but I really wanted to accomplish three things. One, just introduce you to our company, my company and what we do. We're a local developer. Also, show you our plan. Lisa showed you a little bit, but I want to dive into it a little bit more because we do have a a design direction that we're pursuing, even though that's really not part of the GDP, but I wanted to bring that to the forefront. Also, wanted to talk about the market and the community feedback and the process that we've gone through to get to where we are. So those are really the three themes I wanted to go through. Let me pull up the make sure this is, everybody see that? Is that being shared?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you. So as I mentioned, our, my company is Mass Equities. We're a local Colorado developer. I live in Longmont, have been developing projects up and down the front range for over twenty years. As of late, we have a large project that's in downtown Longmont. You may have heard of it. It's a, it's the old Butterball turkey plant that is consists of several city blocks on the south side of town. And we've been redeveloping that into a number of different housing, commercial, makerspace, a brewery, a lot of different things to help regentrify the south side of Longmont. But we've been here for for over twenty years and and developed over two hundred and fifty million dollars with the projects. And that equates to about twenty-five projects up and down the front range. And it's a mix of of office, flex, retail, multifamily. Lisa showed you a little preview of this, but I I wanted to spend a little bit more time on it. And it's kind of related to the work we've done with the community as we're bringing this GDP forward. As she mentioned, what we're proposing is fifty-nine units, fifteen thousand feet of commercial, a large community parking gathering area that actually connects across the street, across Calix to a park that already exists at the adjacent community. And we spent a lot of time thinking through the different types of products that we want to bring to the to the, to the project. And it it all amounts to attached housing. We think there's a a need there. It provides a a good, what I would call attainable product, although this will be all market rate. But but it will be attainable in in when you start to look at cost of housing in in Louisville. As, on the left, on the left side, which is the west side of the project, we're we're headed toward a design that's slated toward duplexes. And that was really due to some feedback, as you'll see, when we met with the community of what they wanted along that west edge. Sort of more in character with what's across the street in the Steel Ranch project. On the, on the east side of the project, running Highway forty-two is more, little, little more density in terms of building type. And then also that's where the commercial sits. Two commercial buildings that create kind of a outdoor gathering area that connects to the park. So this is the concept that we're moving forward and it's, it's been, I think, well-received by the community. It's consistent with the comp plan and the small area plan as as Lisa mentioned. And actually, at the end of the day, it it guarantees more commercial than the current PUD that's in place. And and also, we think it's it's consistent with the density in the area. Here's a little preview of of the design direction we're headed toward. And this was actually created you know, as part of the process with the community. And lots of discussion about what it was difficult for us because we're in the GDP, we're not quite in the PUD yet. But we wanted to give some, some, some thought to this and get some buy-in with the community of the type of dwelling units and commercial that we were thinking and that we would then bring through after this process when the PUD goes through. There's some challenges in in Louisville. I think the last presenter talked a bit about housing. And there is, there is a lack of single-family and attached housing in Louisville. Right now on the market, I checked yesterday, there's forty single-family homes and less than ten attached single-family homes for sale. New development's pretty limited. You know, Lisa showed some of the new things that are coming and and there's not a whole lot in the pipeline. The median sales price is 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 high, in my opinion. It's it's strong. So we have to bring some some housing that's, you know, a little more, as I would call attainable. And then with the recent approval of Redtail Ridge, there's a lot of commercial going to be going in over the next, you know, five, ten years and and there's going to be a need for more housing to keep that in town. You know, our project is a fairly small project, but it it does address a lot of these issues. On the, on the commercial side, that's something that we we really took a hard look at as well. Because, you know, that's been a big part of the discussion at 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 the planning commission level and with some of the neighbors. And and so this this discussion about, you know, the reduction in commercial. And so I I like to just sort of take things head-on and and sort of explain what 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 we're doing, why we're doing what we're doing. There was a market study in two thousand nineteen that the city initiated that was pretty interesting when we read through it. And granted, it's a few years now since that study, but we've also had COVID, which has really changed the commercial landscape as well. And we're seeing that in the market today, as I'll show you on the next slide. We track, we track a lot of the commercial in the area. The the upshot of that will be, what you'll see is, you know, we're looking at product built after two thousand. And there's a fair amount of vacancy, over forty percent with over a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of commercial space. That's moving and it's pretty fluid. You know, as we come in and out of seasons and we get past COVID. But that was a snapshot earlier this year. There's also a considerable amount in the pipeline and we look a little broader into Lafayette and to the edge of Erie to see what's going on. Because that does impact where tenants will want to go. And so we watched that as well. And then the last thing I'll say about the challenges for commercial is we did get a fair amount of feedback from the neighborhood groups about the concern about a lot of commercial or a high, high volume of commercial and and what the results of the traffic and congestion would be. So those are things that we think about as we're moving our plan through. This slide gives you a little more details, a lot of information on this slide. And it's in, the city has a copy of this. So if anybody wants to talk about it, I'm happy to. But this is starting to track from our standpoint real at a micro level, one and a half mile radius, including Old Town, trying to get a sense of what's really out there. What's, what's vacant? What's the type of product that's needed? And and so that's how we track it. And then also, we start to track some of the larger projects at the bottom with the commercial pipeline. And that's really just the Erie project that was discussed earlier. We think that that's going to have a big impact and shift the smaller retail users out toward the two eighty-seven corridor. Lisa mentioned our traffic study. I won't spend a ton of time on this, but our proposed GDP does generate less traffic than the approved, the the approved, that's a typo there, than the approved GDP. We're also, through our discussion with the neighbors, trying to put less pressure on Calix. So we've presented or proposed a one-way entrance into the project. We think there's really good access off Pascal and then the Highway forty-two frontage. Staff has obviously seen our plan, C-Dot has seen our plan, and we have an access permit for forty-two pending. In terms of parking, which is really part of traffic in my mind, we, through the discussions again with the neighborhood, we're going to provide at least two parking spaces per unit with garages and guest parking. And then just due to the size of our site, we will have ample commercial parking that'll be sort of out on Highway forty-two. So the, just in general, we think the plan we're presented and that we're proposing will have less impact on the surrounding area. A little bit about community and neighborhood engagement, because this is really the fun part of what I do. Believe it or not, I I like engaging with the communities because we want to bring a project forward that is supported and that people you know, fits with the community. And so we spent, we spent a lot of time last year, we started in the summer of twenty twenty. And for sort of the latter half of the year, having outdoor meetings, it was challenging with COVID, but we had meetings in the park in several different parks. And we met with HOA leadership. We met with the community members. We had design charrettes, a lot of phone and email follow-up with community members and HOA leadership. And really took a lot of the comments to heart. And now we knew, you know, at the time, we knew that we weren't really getting into design, but in order to gain support of what we're proposing, we wanted to give some ideas of the direction we were headed. And so from a design standpoint, so over sixty people attended our presentations. I believe we listened to the community and we made changes accordingly. And down below are some of those changes. And I'll just rattle them off real quick. They didn't want to drive through. We took that out of our plan. Commercial square foot, square footage and uses was a concern mainly due to traffic and congestion. And so we certainly, we tried to right-size the commercial that we think works for the the community there. And it really, our commercial is neighborhood-focused. The access issues on Calix that I mentioned earlier, the three-story residential that I think Lisa mentioned, we originally came in with a three-story product or a mix of two and three, brought it all down to two stories. We originally had a little different typology along Calix with Fourplex. The community and the, and really the folks that lived around that park wanted a little more transparency through the buildings. So we went to a two, to a paired home model, which is consistent with what's across the park. And then there was concerns about storage and garages. And so we're headed in a direction of adding basements to the paired homes to match the typology across the park. So you know, again, I think we did some good work with the community. We have a lot more to do when we get into the PUD process, but hopefully this demonstrates how we like to work and engage the stakeholders early. Last slide here is just really a recap of of everything I talked about and and why we think this 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 proposed GDP makes sense. It's consistent with the comp plan and the South, South Boulder Road small area plan. It's less dense and we believe will will generate less traffic. Also, we we're actually providing more commercial from a must-build standpoint than what was, what's currently approved. It's not a lot more, but it's more. And and we think that this commercial, granted, the market is is, there's some high vacancies. We think that this type of small format neighborhood commercial for neighborhood serving in our surrounding area will be successful. But fifteen thousand feet is is really where we believe is the is the top of that. As I mentioned, we engaged the local residents and the stakeholders. And I think that was a successful effort. And there'll be more of that as we move through the project. And then I think probably one of the more important points is that this, what we're, what we're proposing here brings what I would call attainable and diverse housing in Louisville near the downtown core, which I think that's important also. This is a walkable site, a bikeable site to downtown. And I think all the other services around it all become part of this, this greater community. So thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions or or address any feedback.
Thank you. We'll take public comment first and then we'll come back for council questions and comments. So
So if any members of the public, you, you'll have two chances to comment this evening. But if you have any initial comments, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. First in the queue, we have Tao Kitron.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Awesome.
Yes, we can. Always muted.
My name's Tal Kitron. I live on two-two-five-eight Park Lane, which is directly across the street from the proposed foundry lot. And I, like most of the members of Steel Ranch Phase One in our community are actually against this proposal, especially as is. A couple of things just to address what was said tonight. Ms. Ritchie admitted that they haven't done a full market analysis, or at least they certainly didn't present that today. And so just that it's going to be fiscally positive in a high scenario is not particularly compelling. This is a profitable enterprise. And then Mass Equities is not a developer with local interests. So they're represented today from Longmont. I think this development would work there, but doesn't quite make sense in Lewisville. It doesn't fit with our community. And has not been well-received, not consistent with what was said today by Mr. Bear. We've been living here for two and a half years and haven't received any outreach from Mass Equities. It sounds like they've engaged with HOA leadership, but as is true with most HOAs, that they do not represent the, the neighborhood's collective interests and not Steel Ranch Phase One. There are other developments such as Forest Park Plaza, Ninety-Fifth and Arapaho, that I think would fit a lot better. A lot of the neighbors here want, actually do want some commercial, like a nice sit-down restaurant, some small shops. But there's housing for sale and for rent all over this neighborhood. So attainable product seems like because of a tough time, economy-wise, that the proposal shifted from commercial to residential because it'll be profitable. And A, I'm not convinced that it's, it's likely profitable. And B, I think the bottom line is, it doesn't fit with Steel Ranch Phase One in this community. I appreciate all your time and I hope you have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next in the queue is John Larry.
John Larry, eleven sixteen Lafarge Avenue. The plan for this entire development has been the antithesis of comprehensive planning, and this proposal is a continuation of this failure. In two thousand and eight, a GDP amendment was approved, calling for three hundred and fifty residential units and a hundred and ten thousand square feet of commercial development. The commercial, commercial development has been whittled down in amendment after amendment, and now we're being asked to take the knife again. The development started out with a positive fiscal impact and now it has become negative. Don't be fooled by the fiscal analysis for this project. The analysis has no assessment of the time value of money. The deficit from the cost of residential service has been going on for years. Our modeling does not account for this negative accumulation. There are other negatives. The hundred and ten thousand square feet of commercial was in the calculations for the metro district's mill levy. Since it has not happened, the residents of this area have taken on the total fifty-mill burden. The staff memo notes, the applicant says, there is no market for commercial in the near future. That has never been the criterion for approving commercial development. Colorado Tech and Centennial Valley have been developing for forty years. But there is a bigger risk of year. For years, there's been a cry for more senior housing and affordable housing. But development after development have been approved, ignoring this cry. We have passed up opportunities where we have had leverage for this type of housing time after time. Your renewal area being the best example. Now we're talking about doing a housing study. This, take this opportunity to conclude this area before, before you win the study. We need to look at all our options and not only focus on areas where we have other agendas. Please turn down this amendment and put a pause concerning any residential development until we looked at all options, all options in the upcoming comprehensive plan process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Cathcart.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I, I actually hadn't planned to speak tonight. I just figured I would listen in because I know that approval of this GDP is going to have an impact on what future developments come forward. And as you all know better than I do, excuse me, as you know better than I do, we don't have much develop, develop, much space to develop left without demolishing. So I, I just have some observations on Mr. Bear's presentation. He talked about community. What he really meant was neighbors, you know, whether his, you know, whether the direct neighbors were all invited or not, I don't know. But the community certainly wasn't. I'm not aware of anything that was communicated to us over at North End. We are, you know, directly opposite this development. I, I am concerned about the change in commercial compared to the original approval for this lot. You know, the, the, less commercial means more pressure on existing commercial, given it's downtown. You know, might seem like a good thing to keep the shops busy and the restaurants busy downtown. Ultimately, though, if you approve this tonight, this, this GDP amendment, and we can't go back, right? We won't get the commercial space back. They'll build more residential. It's a lot more residential as well. And I, I think it's great that Mr. Bear and his team have reduced the traffic in the neighborhood, which just means with the reduced commercial, that the neighborhood will become the traffic, right? Unless we can get them to all walk or bike downtown, they will become the traffic. They're the problem they don't want, right? The neighbors over there. So we all have to take some responsibility for traffic. We all live somewhere. So I'm kind of not, not great on this. So if this gets passed tonight, I, I'm, I'll be, I'll be disappointed. Thank you, Mayor and Councilman Mark Cathcart, seventeen sixty-three Sweet Clover Lane.
Thank you, Mark. Next, we have Gary Larson. Looks like you may need to unmute on your end, Mr. Larson. Oh, we were getting closer. I saw your microphone for just a second. City Clerk Muth, do you have any suggestions to provide for Mr. Larson?
No, you were unmuted for a moment, but then it came back on.
Gary, could you try holding the space bar and see if that temporarily unmutes you, just as a test? If you continue holding it, can you talk?
If you hold the space bar down while you're speaking, we should hear you.
It's, just for the folks listening in, occasionally, the mute signal goes off of Mr. Larson's name. And so that's why it seems like it might work if we just give him another moment. Gary, there's a toll-free number listed on the city webpage. So if you go to the webpage, you should be able to find a phone number there. And you can call in from a phone, either a cell phone or a landline, and dial star nine, and we'll see a hand raised on your behalf. And we will have another round of public comment. So hopefully, we can get this sorted out by the time we get to that. And I will just let everybody know that we did receive your comments for the record, and they're included in the packet and in the addendum. So hopefully, we can get the microphone issue sorted before we get to our second round of public comment. So sorry about that, Gary.
Like, I can read the phone number real quick?
Oh, that would be great. Will you please read the toll-free number?
So Gary, you can call into eight-seven-seven-eight-five-three-five-two-four-seven. And when it asks for the webinar ID number, it's eight-three-three-one-seven-six-three-zero-five-four-six. And that information is on our website, too.
Thank you very much, City Clerk Muth. And anyone is welcome to use that info, not just Gary. Any other members of the public care to make comments in this first round of public comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us back over to council questions and comments. I have a question for the planning director. Planning Directors of FARA, we, we heard in the presentation that the paired units would not have any affordable housing in them. So that led me to believe that the affordable housing would be in the other units. And I know that's not exactly what we're considering tonight, but in some of the criteria that staff's listed out for consideration in the, in the plan, it's listed this affordable component as a reason for consistency. Can you just let me know if that would be allowable to sort of ghettoize all the units into one section of, of the development? Because I thought we've made it pretty clear that, you know, you had to make units consistent and you couldn't do lower, lower-grade finishes in some areas than others.
Yes, that's true. I'll turn it over to Planner Ritchie because she's well-versed on, I think, what's intended to happen with this development.
Okay, great. So at this time, the applicant's exploring kind of all their options, but one of them right now is the fee and lieu, which they could, you know, under our ordinance, pay out into the program rather than provide onsite. And so at the time of plat and subdivision, we will work through that with the applicant as far as the best way to do it. But you're correct, and the intent of the ordinance is to have kind of equal access, equal design within the overall development for where the affordable units are placed and constructed.
Thanks, Planner Ritchie. So there's nothing that ensures that affordable housing would be built as a result of approving this GDP?
The GD, well, the, the development will be subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance that council adopted this summer. And so we are, you know, at this point in time, we haven't worked with the applicant closely on, on what we think is the best way to do that, nor how, nor how they intend to meet it. But they are subject to the ordinance and would be, you know, have available to them the choices within the ordinance.
So they have a path where there would be a fee and not actual housing built?
Under our ordinance, any applicant would have that path.
Okay, just trying to clarify based on, I mean, the criteria that were used, relied pretty heavily on the, you know, new affordable housing that would be created. So I'm just trying to whether that would or would not happen.
Yeah, and honestly, I'll let him answer that as well. I know we've explored both, you know, in conversation with him as well, but I just don't know that that's been finalized.
I think my question was fully answered. Thanks. Other council members have questions? Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you. I, I just have a question of the applicant. Do you, can you give us your anticipated price points for the residential?
We haven't even designed the units yet. It's all at a very conceptual level. So that'll come next when we start to, to really shake out what we're building, sizes, all the details about the residential and the commercial.
Well, surely you must have some thinking or some idea about that. I mean, is there anything you can share with us?
Yeah, I mean, sure, we have ideas, but again, we haven't priced anything. We haven't put any, any information out there, but you know, the market in this area is anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred thousand a door, seems to be for attached housing, a little bit less for condo-style housing. So, you know, we're really just looking at where the local market is right now, and until we get a real design for the different units, but we will have different price points that do put, or the paired homes will be different from the, the townhomes. And so that's really as far as we've taken it.
Hi, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I have a comment for Mr. Bear. At the beginning, you talked about a development that you're working on in Longmont. And particularly, you talked about that you were re-gentrifying the area. You sounded pretty proud of that. I would just caution you against using that particular term. I think there are a lot of people who find that term offensive. And so you might, if, if your intention is to go into communities and gentrify them, you might want to rethink that intention. The other, the, the other thing that I would like to ask is, why, Mr. Bear, you have eliminated the senior housing requirement?
Mr. Bear.
Sure. Thank you for the, the question, the comment. Did not mean to offend anyone, was really just talking about a local project that we've been working on for five years. In different markets, we bring different solutions and different ideas and different designs, really. The way we like to, to develop is, or specifically for that market. So that's, you know, really the way we look at these things as we come into the smaller towns and the different, different areas along the front range.
Mr. Bear, did you want to address the senior housing?
Yeah, on the senior housing front, really just wanted to create more diverse housing, be more inclusive, and deliver a product that we think is, is more what the, the local market is looking for.
Sorry, just to follow up with that, as our community in Lewisville and elsewhere gets older, how is it that we're not looking for senior housing?
I didn't say we're not looking for senior housing in Lewisville. I just said what our strategy was for what we wanted to deliver with our product.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions for either the planning staff or the applicant? Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, sorry. I, I guess the question I had was sort of a follow-up to this. Did you, Mr. Bear, did you consider, you know, this is sort of a all or nothing, you wanted to get rid of the, the limitation of senior housing entirely? Did you consider something in the, you know, in the middle of where, what was required versus, or what was, what we decided the last time and what, what's, what you're proposing now? And why, I, I guess I, I understand the argument that you're making about, you know, having something that's more diverse, I, or at least I, I get kind of what you're saying. We're not really talking about affordable housing here, but, but in terms of, you know, diverse products, I, I guess I sort of understand or follow. I'm not sure I agree with it, but I, I think I get it. But, but why just wipe it out entirely?
Yeah, no, good question. We did, we did evaluate that and discuss it. Not only, you know, amongst our group and, and, but also at, at some of the local community meetings that we had. And so that's just where we, the conclusion that we came to was, we, the product that we think is needed in that area is, is, you know, sort of a non-restricted product. And just opens up options for different, different, different types of folks that are looking to live in this area.
Councilmember Lee, did you have any follow-up on that?
No, I don't think so.
Any other council member questions or comments? All right, turning back to the members of the public, this is your final period that you'll be able to comment. And so first, we have Gary Larson, and my fingers are crossed.
Okay, you should be able to hear me.
We can hear you. I'm so glad, we, I'm so glad we were able to resolve the technology issue.
Well, there was something covering up the unmute button. So anyway, I got it fixed. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the effort and all the work that all of you folks on City Council put in. My name is Gary Larson. I live at twenty-one eighty-nine Park Lane. I live directly across Calix Avenue from the development. Back in two thousand and fifteen, we put together a group called the Ninety-Fifth Quarter Coalition, and which represented over eighteen hundred homes and from eleven different HOAs. And four of you on the council heard me speak often for the original foundry project. We also helped get WW Reynolds approved for Indian Peaks Marketplace. And I'll say that about a year ago, when Mass Equities first came to our community, I was asked to be one of the two people to join them, representing the Dakota Metro District, District, the taxation district. I, I actually went out and recruited HOA member from the lanterns, which is the duplexes behind us, as well as as well as HOA member from up in the townhomes up on top of the hill. I will also say that Mr. Bear talks a lot about how the community is all for this. That is not true. After, to start the meetings, I mentioned, I talked to him about how I had a lot of experience working with the city. I could help get him on the fast track by understanding what the small area plan was all about, because that just came into being back during the 2016, April 2016, which was right after the original foundry was approved in January of 2016. So I was very familiar with the small area plan. I was also very familiar with the community and told them what the community was like, what the demographic was, which is basically adjacent to his, to the project, foundry project. We've got 68 homes that are all empty nester housing, by empty nester meaning main floor master bedroom. Earlier, people were discussing that. That's what kind of helps determine the demographic that you're going to pull in is by having less stairs to walk up to get to bed. Anyway, we, I stopped coming to the meetings after three meetings because Mr. Bear was not really incorporating very much at all of what I was talking about. Since then, he's found a little bit of religion after hearing some of the community members voiced their opinions. But it's not been as rosy as he would portray it. I would recommend what for this site, you've got 1,800 homes through 11 HOAs that would love to be able to walk to an actual sit down restaurant at this site. Not a strip mall taco shop or, you know, pizza place, but an actual sit down restaurant. And to do that, if they eliminated the 25 tall townhomes and brought it down to one story, which is the preferred.
Thank you, Mr. Larson, and, and your time is up. Thank you. Just to note that we did receive your written comments. So thank you very much. Any other members care to comment on this agenda topic? Next, we have Epic Quest Culver Wealth Advisors LLC.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Don Culver. I live at 2147 Park Lane, which is directly across from the property that's under, under consideration for the, for the, the development. The concern I have is, is the reduction in the amount of commercial. I don't, I think what Mass Equities has done with regard to the paired patio homes and that type thing along Calix Avenue has been a major improvement over what they first proposed. However, I'm with Gary Larson and the other people that have spoke. I have not had any conversations with Mr. Barrett or any of his people at Mass Equities. They, he keeps talking about all of the community involvement that he's been involved in, and I certainly part of the community, but I've never even seen anything at all until tonight about, about what, what his company is proposing. But they, the major concern I have is going over there and trying to build a strip mall that basically is doomed for failure as far as I'm concerned. He builds it, puts all of these various units in and then builds a strip mall in the middle of them that would have a very hard time, I think, succeeding. If, if you do what Gary is talking about in the way of a sit down restaurant and something that's attractive that would bring in the community, you've got a lot of homes around here that would walk over there and, and utilize some of that, those facilities. Doesn't have to be restaurants, but it could be things such as what's, what Forest Park has with some small businesses, you know, State Farm Insurance Agency or those kind of things, or even CPA, a small CPA firm or that type of thing. So anyway, that's would be about all I'd have to say. I just think that downsizing the commercial is a mistake. The, the commercial is what really what pays the bills around, within the community. Granted, residential pays property taxes and that type thing, but the, the commercial property, commercial buildings and commercial enterprises are what really supports the community. And that's about all I did to say. But thank you for listening and I appreciate your work on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carlos Hernandez.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for taking the time to evaluate this. I, I just wanted to say that I live right near the project. I can see it from my front and backyard, and I completely support it the way it is. I think that what's really key is some of the other work you heard about tonight about equity and inclusion and the affordable housing pieces. If this is clearly not going to be in the affordable realm, but any housing that we build in this area helps everybody up the ladder and frees up space, including family members that I know that would want to be in this area that are going to have housing options as a real to this project. We, we are in a crisis. We need housing and this is a place to do it. And I think it's a great place to do it. The new underpass provides a great opportunity to walk to existing commercial. We're talking about another underpass underneath South Boulder Roads. So there's a lot of places to walk that we could support existing businesses if there's not the level of commercial that was once envisioned. The, the part that I think is just really kind of disheartening is that we, everybody who's talked to this point, I was here in 2008 defending and standing up for Steel Ranch as a community to get built with new housing. And there was a large voice of opposition who didn't want Steel Ranch to be here, the people that are testifying tonight, their homes, they didn't want them here. And now they're here and they're contributing members of the community. As far as I can recall, we have a planning commission member, we have former open space board members, we have Louisville teachers who now live in this new housing that was once opposed. So I think when we add housing in Louisville, we add great people. We add character. We add the things that we thrive as a community to achieve. That happens with new housing. And given the fact that all of us on the phone tonight have a house and have equity in a home, and we have to give a little bit, and the part of giving a little bit is being willing not to have everything we want right out our front door. We're going to have to walk a little bit further to get that commercial. And, and that's the sacrifice we get for getting great people who are part of our community. And I tend to believe, and I know this is heresy, but I tend to believe when we welcome new people, like we welcomed lantern residents and we welcome Steel Ranch residents, that that happens. Final point is there are families who live in these patio homes and in these duplexes and along the green, and it's discriminatory to say that a certain house type only works for a certain person. That doesn't reflect the Louisville character. Houses are for everybody. And they don't necessarily have to dictate a certain type. So I hope you approve this with haste tonight. And we keep moving forward in our journey to be an inclusive and welcoming community to new people, because it makes Louisville a great place to be when we do that. Thanks for your time and thanks for the opportunity to speak. I wish you well tonight and have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other members care to comment this evening? This is your last chance on this topic. Will Fry.
I just wanted to say that in terms of discriminatory housing, that having a main floor master and not having to go up and downstairs helps keep people within our community and the elderly age group, because if they have to go upstairs and they've broken their hip or had other things to cause immobility, that, that will make them go to a care facility rather than being able to come back home. Thank you all for all you're doing for our community.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight for our consideration in the public hearing? All right, seeing none, that takes us back over to council. Council questions, comments, or motions, or deliberations? Any council members have anything further for us tonight? Mayor Pretten Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was elected to council in 2015. So this is the third time that I've actually, you know, seen this proposal come to us. When it came to us in 2016, that was really the first sort of generation of that with the idea of food hall. And it was, it was something that was very interesting and had a lot of support by council. But that time it was a lot of commercials, 32,000 square feet for commercial, determine 32 units and 24 of those would be reserved for 55 and over. And that's something that was negotiated during that council meeting. So my message with that is, you know, I think it's important for us to be looking at the opportunities that are before us. And I think we need to be open. I know it's, it's a really tough thing to have negotiation from a dais and an ordinance, but you know, this is the way we do business. This is our rules of, of government. So, you know, this is as evolves, 2019 came back and and I understand the question that was, that councillor Lipton asked. He was really trying to get a a sense of what's going on with the market right now, not what happened five years ago. We know some things happened, but really what is the opportunities today for commercial? And so really the proposal in front of us today for the GDP is, is basically the same as what it was in 2019. But the, the huge change really is more than a doubling in the residential units and then getting away of the restriction for 55 and over. You know, I think that we wanted that restriction and, you know, because the way I like to term it is it was purposeful housing. It was serving a particular need we had in the community. And, you know, we passed an ordinance in the summer about affordable housing. I think affordable and senior housing are two of those purposeful things that we need to be considering. And if those can be considered in the context of what is before us tonight, I think it's important for us to do that. As, as citizen John Larry pointed out, the, you know, the market analysis, and if you look at the numbers, obviously, when you reduce the commercial and you up the residential, you actually have a less, it's more cost involved. And as the last, one of the last speakers was mentioning, it may cost us to do something. And sometimes we make that decision that we do things because it is the right thing for the community, even though it may not be hugely, hugely lucrative. And I would argue that senior and affordable housing are needs of the community. And if it's a break easy, break even proposition, it's probably something that we should consider and we should discuss. And so I'm hoping that we can have a discussion tonight that we can coalesce around something that we think would be a good fit for the community. And, you know, I'd love for that, that area to, to have some kind of development, get rid of the big dirt pile that's there with all the weeds all over it. But this is something that is part of our comp, comp plan. And it's something that we've been talking about for decades now. So I, I guess I, I'm just asking my colleagues to bring their thoughts and maybe we can coalesce around something that makes sense to us. And really does the best to serve the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you. So, you know, my, my recollection of the senior housing, and I think it's mentioned somewhere in the staff report, maybe a couple of times, also had to do with the concern with school overcrowding. And one of the ways to solve that concern at that time was to designate a portion of this for senior housing. This obviously seniors wouldn't have as much impact on schools as, as others. So I, I don't want that to be lost in the conversation. I'm certainly supportive of wanting to see 55 plus housing developed in the city. But I also remember why we required on this development, which was largely associated with the school district and not the, the need for necessarily the deficit in that type of housing. You know, I, I guess I agree with Pro Tem Maloney. I, I'm not sure I would be totally supportive of this proposal tonight, but I would like the applicant to be able to walk away understanding what we would desire at that site, even if that's what the current GDP is. Or if there are some modifications we might entertain in the future that might be better aligned with our community goals, which are, I believe, are somewhat different than perhaps they were, you know, two years or five years ago. And I, you know, I was very skeptical when it was originally proposed that there would be 76,000 square feet of commercial development. I, I don't think there's the market for 76,000 square feet. And I, I think, I think what we have gotten is a big dirt pile because of a failed assumption on what the market can accommodate in the way of commercial along that area. I do want to say something, and this may not be particularly popular, but I, I do want to say that I am in favor of density. And the increased density that's being proposed is something that I wouldn't walk away from. If you're serious about having affordable housing, even if it's market based or affordable housing, you have to consider density. There's no way to get around that. And if this is an opportunity for us to accomplish some of our goals in the way of housing, I think we ought to look at that or look at this opportunity and not necessarily be dismissive of having more density in this area. So I'm really curious to see what the rest of you have to say. Like I said, I'm not sure I'm willing to support this tonight in the fashion that's being presented, but I, I would like to be able to provide the applicant with some direction about what, what our desires would be and, and what our resistance points might be. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. So just adding on as one of the members that has heard this application several times. And then it looks like we'll shift over to the people that have a more fresh perspective, or maybe not. So we continuously hear from the community and we have incorporated in our comprehensive plan and in our small area plans that these walkable connected areas are really important to community members to be able to walk to school and bike to school and walk to shops and walk to the dentist or to your neighbor's house or to your grandma's house. And so what's been pretty frustrating is that time after time, developments have come in with a proposal that is purported as mixed use. But we have yet to get any mix of uses in those developments that have come in. And so what has happened is the residential units have built out hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of residential units. And we have gotten no commercial. So the, the commercial space for this was originally much larger. The patio homes across the street with the park originally were in a different location with the street in a different location. Things were all totally different on the general development plan. And maybe the shrinking of the block size and the, you know, cannibalization of commercial has really hurt this commercial area over time. And, and maybe it's just market factors, but in any case, you know, we continue to erode this mixed use concept so that, you know, people are having to go much further. And all the studies that I've seen show, you know, distance is really the thing that gets in people's mind when they choose to take a car or to take a bike or something like that. So that on one element is just very frustrating that all of these developments have come in and cloaked as a mixed use development, when in fact it's not mix of uses at all. And then we're left as a bedroom community. So that's, that's very frustrating. And the other portion of that is within the principles, you know, we say there should be a mix of housing types and pricing to meet economic, social, and multi-generational needs. And housing should meet the needs of seniors, empty nesters, disabled renters, first time home buyers, and all others. And so when I'm reading the public comments and hearing the public comments, I'm hearing people wanting those things. And to hope that we'll get that from a development does not end up with us getting that from a development. We've, we hoped that we would have more market rate housing by approving some, several other developments. I don't have to name specifically which one. And, and they're, you know, 700, 800, $900,000 townhomes. So it hasn't addressed the issue. And so, you know, that this application does not address the principles within the housing policy. And so I understand what Mayor Pretten Maloney is saying, that if we were to change the zoning of this property and to take a fiscal loss, that it would have to be purposeful, but this application does not meet that purpose. And so I'm troubled to try to craft a, a general development plan from the dais for the applicant to submit. I just don't think that that goes well. I don't, I, I don't think that it will end well, but I understand what you're saying. But if we have a purpose that we would want to rezone it with, it might be worth taking a loss. And then I think that would mean that we would need to require the things that we're hoping to get from that purpose and not just hope for them, because we have not yet once gotten the things we were hoping for. So I, I just, I think you have to require the things that the community expects. And so just going back to the fiscal balance, if, since it's not requiring the things that we expect, going back to how this property was supposed to serve the neighborhood, I, I, the comments that resonate with me are the ones from community members that wrote in and spoke tonight around the fiscal impact, both to the HOA, that has the higher mill levy that will take the hit from that will take the hit for having to change the classification from commercial to residential, but also to the community at large, because when this development was put in, the council didn't require things like stop signs. The council didn't require underpasses to connect it to the next door neighborhood or underpasses to be completed to connect it under the railroad tracks. And so while there were some impact fees paid and there have obviously the community members that live there obviously spent sales taxes, it is far short of the cost. And there's still deficits to infrastructure. And we even heard in the last presentation that, you know, around the affordable housing in this neighborhood, there are deficits to infrastructure around the neighborhood, connecting it to the school, to the next door neighborhood, across the street, there are deficits. So there are all of these deficiencies we need to pay for because they were not paid for by the developer and the costs aren't covered. And we're further eroding our ability to generate revenue to do that. So I just, I don't find that it's consistent with the general, I don't find that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. I don't find that it's consistent with the policies. And I I can't support this tonight. Next in the queue, we have councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been, it's been good hearing a lot of the comments from the public and and obviously presenters and staff and my colleagues and all that. So some of my thoughts are, of course, yeah, I got I was elected in twenty nineteen and and after the second, this is my first time dealing with this topic, really. And I think, you know, yeah, what I what I'm hearing, what I understand is, you know, hey, we were talking about one hundred and ten, then it was seventy-six, then it's thirty-two, and now it's fifteen or thereabouts. And and so I I think that's that's a really bad pattern for us. And what I'm, what I'm hearing, I think, from some of my colleagues is or let me put it this way. The last time we approved something, it was with the hope that something would get built, and it hasn't been built. And so why hasn't it been built? I I'm not an expert, right? But but I would assume it's not profitable for the developer who, you know, owns the land to build on it in its current situation, otherwise they build it. And so it's it's not being built. And so that's what we have right now is is a dirt pile that's been referred to. So there's a part of me that says, okay, well, what can we do to get this built? And this developer wants to build it if we change these things. Like, great, let's do it. Which we've done over and over and over again, and it doesn't actually get the next thing built, right? So it was, okay, great. This is the thing that'll get built. And then three years from now, we're at it again with someone who wants to change a little bit. Now, we have complained. So that's kind of like on the bad side. We've also complained that and Mary, you put a fine point on it, that we look for mixed use, then we only get the residential and then and then we just get stalled and then we ask for more residential. So I do like that this developer, who is not to blame for previous moments, is coming with a concurrent development, right? So residential and the commercial will be built at the same time, half of it, right, each. And so that's what we've been asking for, right? That's like, we don't want to get tricked by another situation where they build the housing and don't build the commercial and then just hold the space ransom for for in the next moment. So this one is saying we'll do it concurrently. Now, I still kind of read between lines and say, well, but only half of it, right? So we might build half of it and then say, well, can't do the second half and and I'm not going to build the commercial and the residential. So we're stuck again with only half the development. Can we do it all commercial, all residential again? So I I still think we could get there with half. So I think the the idea that this guarantees more resident or more commercial than the previous one isn't accurate because it only guarantees half of it and then we might be at a standstill again. And it guarantees nothing because who knows what'll ever get built. To, I think councillor Lipton's points, you know, I I like the idea of mixed housing. Mr. Bear, I think I understand the concept of, oh, well, there can be senior housing. We're gonna not gonna restrict it. So seniors are the right market. We'll build senior housing and and it'll be perfect for them and they'll want to live in it or someone else might live in it as a member of the public. I'm forgetting now. Anyway. But we want senior housing and we want affordable housing. And what I'm not hearing from your proposal is a commitment, false or true, a commitment to bring senior housing and affordable housing to this area. So I, you know, and affordable housing comes in very, in lots of different forms. And certainly, you know, a house with not granite countertops is a great way to have a house that's more affordable. So we cannot build really, really, really beautiful homes with the nicest finishes and then have them be affordable. That's not, that's not how it works, right? So so we do need different levels of housing to have some naturally affordable things. And so I'm not, I am in support of higher density. I am in support of potentially more residential units in this space. But the way, the way you're going to get me, Mr. Bear, is with guarantees of affordable housing and guarantees of senior housing, not just density for density's sake. Because to the mayor's point, those can just turn into eight hundred fifty thousand dollar luxury condos, which doesn't give me senior housing and doesn't give me affordable housing. So I I could support this concept. I could support the quantity of commercial and the quantity of residential and the layout and the traffic and all of that. I don't really mind your proposal that much. But in its current form, I don't feel like we're getting the guarantees of the things that are going to be really important to my community and the things that I'm I I promise to fight for. So you're not that far from getting my vote, Mr. Bear. But I I think similar to Mr. Lipton, I don't think I can, I can support tonight's proposal in its current form. But but yeah, it's, this is very complicated and I know there are a lot of little pieces and a lot of history in play. And I'm I'm new to this conversation. But but I I would like to figure out my end goal, and I hope it's the goal of everyone here, is to figure out how to get this to move forward. Because it's it's frustrating for the residents. They're not getting what they want right now. So they may not want this, but they also don't want nothing. And so we can't just say no to everything. We have to figure out what is that concrete step forward to actually get something done? And maybe it's with with you, Mr. Bear, and that would be great. And maybe it isn't. And so I I hope I hope we can find a path forward and that it's not dead in the water tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown, and just or councillor Dickinson, sorry about that. And just to clarify, I I see a lot of hands, but we're on council questions and comments, and I didn't really hear a question there of the applicant or stuff, but you will have a time for closing remarks, just to let the applicant know that. And Planner Richie, did you want to clarify something or?
No, only just to let you know the applicant is interested in dialogue around some of the questions and comments you're stating. So just just to let you know that.
Thank you. And so next in the queue, we have councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I I also, I think it's not, it's not often that councillor Dickinson and I agree on things related to development proposals. But tonight, I agree with several of the things that he said. In in particular, I agree with the idea that we need that I'm disappointed that the applicant has not or is asking to get rid of our senior housing requirement. I think that is an identified need in our community. I'm also disappointed that there's no guarantee that this particular development will actually increase the number of affordable housing units in Lewisville. I also am disappointed that we are considering a proposal that, again, downsizes the commercial development. And I feel like we're being sold by a developer, we're being sold an argument that is inconsistent with a develop with an argument that other developers developers have made to this very same council less than a month ago about the need for commercial. And that there is a market for commercial. And so, you know, I would be interested to have staff review the square footage that has been recently approved in terms of commercial by this by this council versus this, because it does seem like one developer is telling us that there is no market for this stuff and we need to downsize it. And another developer is telling us that there's plenty of market and we should approve it. So I'm I'm particularly disappointed in this particular proposal. And I think that it's it's hard for me to see this move as anything but a move to modify the proposal to make this as profitable for the developer as possible. And this council is under no obligation to increase the profits of the developer. We need to work with developers to make sure that these are economically viable solutions. But just, you know, removing the restrictions, you know, increasing the number of residential, decreasing the number of commercial and and not supporting senior or affordable housing is not something that I can support. It doesn't support the needs of the community. And it doesn't support the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, thanks. It's been really an interesting discussion so far. I'm looking back at our criteria. One of the things on on PCZD, I mean, there's several points I want to make, I guess. One of them is, I'm not, I'm not sure that the way that this proposal has been presented to us fits at least under seventeen seventy-two oh one oh with the purpose of encouraging the use of coordinated community design. I think that's one of the reasons. That that's sort of one of the reasons I think some of the residents have gotten very concerned about how this how this fits or doesn't fit with the community, both in terms of some of the density, which I don't, on a, on a face of it, don't object to, but I think in the place where it's being proposed, I I'm not sure that that fits with the design of the rest of the community. But I I also, there is I I think suitability is important. And I I'm not, I don't, I don't think that this proposal makes that makes a good case for it. I I am concerned about the pulling way back of commercial in the in the development. I because I was, you know, and maybe the mayor was saying, you know, it was all about fresh perspective and I raised my head and she said, well, maybe not. You know, we've seen a number of us on the council, the mayor and I and Mayor Pro Tem and the former Mayor Pro Tem have all seen the commercial just being sort of sapped away from this. And we do have some concern. I happen to think, yeah, that there, part of the reason for that is you're trying to adjust to market changes. And so I don't, I don't look at that as some kind of bad faith. I think it's it's unfortunate. I just, I I'm not sure I completely accept all of the the arguments that are being made about it. But at some level, that's, I'm not the expert on this. And I I think the materials that you provided support some of those conclusions, but they I think another piece, though, that really does get to me has to do with the comprehensive plans emphasis on on senior housing, the statement that appeared in the that was that was quoted in in the staff report about a mix of housing types and pricing to meet changing economic, social, multi-generational needs of those who reside and would like to reside in Lewisville. I think in some respects, Mr. Bear, that that is kind of what you're some of what you're proposing here. But the policy NH five five point one is housing should meet the needs of seniors, empty nesters, disabled renters, first time home buyers and others by a jury variety of housing types, prices and styles are created and maintained. From my perspective, I I guess I would, I would push back a little bit on what councillor Lipton said before. I think that when we put the restriction and we we really did negotiate that restriction, was very clear negotiation about that specific issue. I I think there was an element of we were worried about school crowding. I I think that's no question that that was part of it. I don't remember that being the animating principle, though. I I think this was a kind of, and it wasn't for me, because I I remember it was much closer to when I first was elected to council and senior housing was something that I campaigned on. And it was something that was important to me. And I believe I talked about it at that, at the, in the conversations about this and with respect to this particular development. So I don't, I don't think it was solely a matter of of school size, which is not as much of an issue as it was back then, clearly. But I I do think that that piece of it really bothers me. It bothers me as I kind of suggested in my comment. Then it's just sort of wiped away completely. That doesn't, that doesn't speak well to that particular concern. I think I'm I'm not as concerned about the the fact, the affordable housing piece in the in this sense. There are rules that we have put in place about affordable housing. One of them is fee and low. So if there's housing, as as I think Mr. Hernandez mentioned, if there is housing that is there, there is going to be a pot of money to use for affordable housing in Lewisville. Now, how that works out, I we haven't yet done it, but I mean, it's part of the rules. We didn't want that in the rules. We shouldn't have put it in the rules. So I I have a hard time. You know, saying that that's just that that a vote for this is a vote not for affordable housing. I don't, I don't think it's quite that simple. So but I just, I I do have strong, still very strong feelings about that, that I have a strong concern about the loss of of commercials. But more importantly, the loss of that senior housing piece just just kind of gets to me. And I'm not sure that although we we want density in some places in town, I'm not sure this is the place for it. But I I think from my standpoint, the bigger issues have to do with the loss of commercial and 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 the loss of the senior housing component. Thanks.
Councilmember Fagin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm going to agree with what almost everything that's been said by my fellow council members. First, I will say that I'm also one of the members that is new to this conversation. I've only been on for two years and haven't discussed it before, although I have been involved with city things for the last two conversations. My concerns are very similar. I do want to keep the senior housing. That's a really important issue for me. And I would also like to keep the affordable housing. And I'm not a fan of losing any of the commercial space. So any way that you can get those things all into the a new proposal would be wonderful. The other question I have, though, is access to the property, particularly from Highway forty-two. I know that there are there are other businesses to the south of this property that are kind of tricky to get to. You can't turn left off of Highway forty-two and get into them. If that was something that could be worked out, that would be a real benefit and would keep the traffic from interfering with the neighbors to the west of your property. So the, I guess, the west of Calix. If they could come in and out off of Highway forty-two. And so as my other council members have said, I don't think that I could support this particular proposal. But I would look forward to seeing a new one. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Fagin. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Bear for any closing comments or feedback that he wants to provide to us.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, everyone, for all the comments and observations. But I'm trying to keep a list here. There's a number of things. First off, I'll take some of the the ones that I have a direct answer for. The Highway forty-two access, we did work with CDOT to try to get a full movement at this site and they just wouldn't allow it nor with the city engineers. So that was something we explored. But but we we do believe with all the access points up at Pasco and at Summit and and at the site, we think that it all works pretty well. The traffic study indicates that it does. So I just wanted to tell you that we were focused on that and looked at that quite extensively. So I just wanted to tell you that we were focused on that and and looked at that quite extensively. I want to address but I more make a comment on the affordable housing question. My understanding is that we are required to to be, to to adhere to the affordable housing requirements for our site that are relatively new. So we don't have a problem with that. We haven't decided exactly how we want to do that, but we understand that that's part of of this development. So I just wanted to put that out there. With regard to the seniors, the fifty-five plus restriction, you know, I'm I'm open to to discussing that further. You know, I, 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 after hearing everybody speak on this and and you know, thinking about it more, if there's, if there's a a requirement that goes with us as a percentage of the units, I'm open to that. I think, you know, it it helps with the, I I want to, my goal is to keep this a mix of housing. So I don't want to put a a high percentage on there, but I would be totally open to some percentage that was part of it. That that, you know, that we can agree on. So I'm not exactly sure how that works, but I throw that out there for discussion. And and then I also wanted to address that there were several comments about the community involvement and I'm not sure if it, why some of these people were not included, but we spent a lot of time with the leadership of the HOAs to get the information pushed down to all the members of the HOAs. And then also, like I said, hosted meetings in the park where we had sixty-plus people in three different days. So I feel like at this stage of the project where we're really just talking about zoning and uses, I felt like we, you know, did a, did a good job of of trying to get the word out. We also had an email campaign that, you know, information was provided to us through the local, through the homeowners associations. And that consisted of Dakota Steel Ranch, the Lanterns, Overlook. So all in that area, which is a couple, was hundreds of homes. I just wanted to put that out there because there were some comments made there and and we made a very concerted effort to get out and talk to people and bring them into the discussion. Yeah. So like I said, if there's room to discuss the the seniors piece and and I'm 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 open to it.
Thank you very much. So I see some other council members in the queue. I would just want to encourage council members to get any other additional information they need out on the table so we can close the public hearing and then take action. So if there's any new information or new evidence, you need to be sure to ask about before I close the public hearing this evening. And if there's any other comments, go ahead and provide them at this time. So I just want to reflect on some of the comments that were made after mine. There was just this there was sort of a consistent topic brought up around the new inclusionary rule and whether or not that means that affordable housing is being provided. So what what I was really talking about is that, you know, in order to approve this, we need to find that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and our intentions for this area. And as Mayor Protem Maloney laid out, like this was really envisioned as a commercial area to help be the mixed use area for this neighborhood. And that it would also generate a financial balance for the city to be able to provide services to the neighborhood so we could continue to provide high-quality city services across the entire community. And so as he laid out really clearly that, you know, we have some issues we might want to address that would encourage us to undercut those other values and that would be senior housing and affordable housing. And so while it may be true that paying a fee and lieu satisfies our law, it does not meet policy NH five point one for providing additional affordable housing within the community. And so without guaranteeing or having a, having a, you know, requirement to have that on this site, I don't see that it meets the threshold for what Mayor Protem Maloney was laying out. It's like, you know, we might want to have this conversation to make these kinds of changes. But if we're going to do that, we sure as heck better be sure we have that language written in as required because we know from past experiences, if we don't require something, it doesn't happen. So that's, that was the point I was trying to make. So just to clarify that. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I I'd like to propose a motion at this time, but not sure that it's it's the appropriate time if you haven't closed the public hearing.
You can make a motion before we close the public hearing. We can debate it. I was going to take the temperature of the room and then get some direction from the staff. It seemed like the majority of people felt they couldn't support the proposal tonight. And so if that is the case, we might ask staff to bring, bring us back a resolution that's different than what's in our packet. So we might just ask for advice on what to do as a motion once we understand the temperature of the room.
Okay, I was gonna propose that we actually remand it back to the planning commission for them to do the, the, because it's, it's difficult for us to do this from the dais, obviously. And I know that's been something that we've done before, but I'm happy to take direction from folks to see how the best way to do that.
And I think we could successfully craft that motion tonight if that's where the group goes. But let's just, if you don't mind holding off just to see where everybody kind of weighs in, that would be helpful.
Okay, very good.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, you had asked whether there's information that we could, it would be helpful to us. I I, one of the points that I made in my comments at the beginning had to do with the the concept in PCZD of coordinated community design. I I I wouldn't mind having a little more perhaps a little input from planning about what that, I mean, I I think I know what that term is from a kind of lay perspective, so to speak. But I don't know that I have a good sense of whether, you know, whether that's a term of art and because I think that that certainly the the coordinated community design and the suitability is part of the comments that we have received from, from the community have to do with those two issues. So suitable, I think I get that, but coordinated community design, I've used it in a certain way. I'm not sure whether the staff would use it that way, but I'd love to draw on their expertise.
Planner Richie, please help us out.
Sure. So right, the language you're quoting from is in section seventeen seventy-two ten. It's the purpose of the zone district and so where the planned communities and district is created in recognition of the economic and cultural advantages that will accrue to the residents for an integrated planned community development of sufficient size, provide for related areas for various housing types, retail service, recreation, school and other uses of land. And again, so that kind of suitability and coordinated community design. I mean, I think you know, you can look at this a number of different ways, you know, particularly in just kind of what property is eligible for a planned community zone district need needs to be at least thirty acres in common ownership. And so, right, really, the the overall intent to start with is that there's not kind of a straight zone district that's suitable for kind of a mix of uses and a mix of allowances. And so really cities and developers negotiate through the process to come up with something that is appropriate and for that particular context in that particular area. And so really, that's kind of that coordinated design. It assumes that kind of one zone district isn't applicable and we need to work through how that fits. Where that gets trickier over time is when we see these amendments, right? So we start pulling off pieces and and doing one-off amendments and it gets more difficult as we get closer to the end too, right? Because, you know, some of the original things are are already baked. And now we're trying to react to shifting markets that maybe are different than what the original design was ten or fifteen years earlier. Community needs change, you know, from ten or fifteen years earlier when these were originally designed. And so, you know, these, these terms get I think you have probably more disparate opinions over time about what these subjective terms mean and how they can be applied. And I think, you know, that so I'm, I'm not sure that I'm answering your question, other than to just describe initially what the intent of this type of zone district is. Is it really is to try and provide something that's unique and fits the area? But I do think because of the changes over time, you are also able to look at, you know, how did the the rest of the area change and grow in the direction of the city? And and that's the amendment process and why the code then circles back to say you need to look at the, you know, you need to look at those original things and apply it in the same manner, right? So it allows for changes. It doesn't say that the code, you know, code says you can't change it. It allows for them, but it does kind of pull back that original intent so that you're reviewing it through that same lens. From staff's perspective, you know, we certainly recognize that the loss of commercial is is a concern here and we worked, you know, with the applicant a lot and let them know that that would probably be the primary driver of the discussion here tonight. And was it ever realistic that we were going to get a hundred and some thousand square feet or seventy thousand square feet or fifteen thousand square feet? You know, we have to go off the information we have at the time and you know, we had certainly have heard a lot of neighborhood concern tonight. The packet, I think, reflects a little bit more mixed, you know, opinions throughout the neighborhood. And so obviously we need to, you know, pay attention to the folks that spoke here tonight, but again, those are, those are hard things to quantify. And so really, that is the purpose of city council then to kind of close this loop a little bit is, you know, to take all of the evidence that's here before you and to try and balance these needs of what is the original intent of the zone district? Where is the city now and how is this meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan and the purpose of this zoning? So again, staff's recommending support for the application. We've reviewed it and talked with it and analyzed it. And again, for the purposes of, you know, meeting the the areas of the plan around a mix of housing, which, you know, we certainly can talk about adding back in requirements. I I know the applicant is is open to that as a staff and and it may be that, you know, we continue the meeting tonight, so, you know, transitioning now into kind of options moving forward, Mayor. I know you're still trying to determine kind of where everyone is from a consensus perspective, so we can.
Can we just clarify, Councilmember Lee, does that answer your question about what coordinated community design means? Thank you.
Do you want options now or later?
I think I I'm, I think Councilmember Lipton might have opinions and Councilmember Brown had a path forward. So I think I would want to find out where different council members are. I'm not a hundred percent sure where they are yet. Councilmember Lipton.
My question actually is as far as City Attorney Kathleen Kelly. And I I guess I'm a little confused now on the applicability of our inclusionary housing policy or ordinance and how that would be applied to this particular development or others in the future that council may consider. I'm looking at, you know, when I remember the plain language was for that ordinance. I'm I'm wondering to what extent we have discretion to this process to actually require more or different than what was contemplated in the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And I guess I don't need to know the answer of that tonight. But I think when and if this comes back, I think it would be helpful to get that legal advice from the city attorney, just to understand what the boundaries are for us in negotiating that or demanding that of this or another developer. I'd I'd also have a similar question on the fifty-five plus housing and not sure exactly you know, how how that would be defined. I'm not sure we have a definition in our code for that. Other than just to say, you know, an owner has to be fifty-five or older as a covenant, you know, related to that property. But I'd also like some advice as to how that could be required in this type of proceeding in the future and what the opportunities and constraints might be of city council to work through those kind of issues. So like I said, I don't necessarily need that answer tonight, but when this, if if this comes back, I think that would be helpful information for council to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. So we can get that in the form of a memo from City Attorney Kelly in the near future. And I just want to clarify that in my comments, I was not trying to suggest that we are requiring more or different than our rules. This is currently a commercial property that we're being asked to increase density and to increase, to change the land use entirely. And so it has to meet the comprehensive plan requirements. And so I just wanted to clarify that I was not in any way trying to require more than what's required, but it doesn't meet the minimum requirements of the comprehensive plan in its current state without doing some other things. So I just wanted to clarify. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and make my motion. I'm going to move that we remand this application, the GDP back to the planning commission. Noting that a majority of council has indicated it concerns about affordable housing, senior housing and a loss of commercial space in this development.
Is there a second? Well, second for the purposes of discussion and just Planner Richie and the city attorney. If anything more is needed for a motion to remand back to planning commission.
I don't think anything is more is needed, but I think the applicant and staff would be I think interested. We've heard so far, I think, just the loss of the requirement around senior housing, which that was just to be clear, that's not embedded in the current GDP. That's there a subdivision agreement that runs with land. So that would be an amendment to the subdivision agreement. So if it's some clarity around there, if you have any direction you need to provide. And then you know, maybe from a price point or construction type, it sounds like maybe some sort of clarity around that, although at the GDP stage, you know, that's not required. And then I guess I'm, I also, if we send it back to planning commission, I'm wondering out loud a little bit if this is just a conversation, you know, how that's helpful to council. If there's specific feedback or direction, you feel like you want them to continue to discuss and explore. You know, if there's certain direction you'd like to give them beyond, you know, Councilmember Brown's concern, if there's an outcome. Or if we just take it at that.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you. I I I think that what Councilor Lipton was asking for from the city attorney would be very helpful for us for this and and future discussions. So thank you for that, Councilor Lipton. You know, as I, if I, as I look at this whole thing, and I think that we need to be giving you know, our thoughts and direction to the planning commission as they work through this, if we do agree to remand it back to planning commission. As far as the commercial, the commercial numbers are essentially the same as they were when it was approved in two thousand nineteen. So it was fourteen thousand and something and now we're talking at fifteen thousand. I look at that as being similar. And you know, the comments about the the density, I'm okay with the increase in density on the residential side with the agreements that we had before that they would be fifty-five and over. For me, that was really an important thing. If we don't do that, then I'm not interested in upping the density. And I know that that, I mean, that's a question that Councilor Lipton just asked and and Planner Richie also addressed as well. You know, I I think that what we're looking, what I'm looking for is a purposeful housing, you know, and I think that's a need. I agree that there were discussions back five, six years ago by the planning commission about making that a requirement. And one of the reasons was because of the schools. But there's a lot of other reasons as well as far from my perspective. I also like the proposal and the concurrences. I think it's very important. I'm fine with what is being proposed with the sixty percent residential. What enables fifty percent of the commercial and then the last forty percent of residential enables the last fifty percent of commercial. I am fine with that, that breakdown. And I also believe that we, we have to go with our ordinance on an inclusionary housing we just passed. And so that either requires a percent or requires fee and low. And I would be remiss if I would require anything else. So I think we have to use our ordinances as we pass them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'm not hearing any more requests for information. So I'll close the public hearing and ask if there's any more deliberation on this motion or any substitute motions. Um, so I would make a substitute motion, um, to give staff direction, uh, to bring us back a resolution of denial. Uh, because the application is not consistent with seventeen point seven-two of our planned community zone district because it does not, uh, promote coordinated community design. It does not, uh, encourage and improve the health, safety and general welfare of the people of the area. And it does not, uh, recognize the economic advantages that accrue, uh, in the planned community development with sufficient size and related areas. Additionally, I would ask them to craft the language around the fact that it doesn't meet the principles in NH five of, uh, the comprehensive plan or NH five point one, because there are no guarantees that will have those types of units available within the development. Is there a second? All right, so the motion.
I'll second that.
Uh, was that council member Brown?
Yeah.
Um, thanks, council member Brown. For them, there's a motion on the table to give staff direction, uh, to bring us back a resolution of denial. Any discussion of the motion? Council member Dickinson?
Mayor, I don't, uh, disagree with most of, most of what you said. I just, my, my understanding is that, um, the, the previous motion was kind of in agreement with what you're saying, but just sending it back. So can you help me understand the difference between sending it back and asking him to make those exact adjustments versus just denying it because of those?
Um, I heard planner Richie saying that, you know, sending it back, there was just confusion as to what the issue is worth with the application. And it would just cause churn, um, and, you know, there, there wouldn't be any clear direction. And so, um, I think crafting a resolution of denial and allowing, uh, an application that meets our criteria to come through the full process um, is the best path forward at this time. So that's why I offered that as a path, I think, you know, um. It, it, we oftentimes try to solve everybody's problems from up here, but really, in fact, we have an application in front of us and it either meets our requirements or it doesn't. Council member Dickinson, did you want to say anything?
Oh, yeah, um, planner Richie had her hand up, so I thought she might respond as well, or I can respond.
Um, we've, I've closed the public hearing, um, so.
Okay, um, yeah, so I, I guess, mayor, maybe you can help me with, um, the difference in timing. Cause again, I'm just trying to, like, I'm, I'm trying to, um, basically agree on, um, something as, as a council. I think we're all pretty much pushing in the same direction. We're all not, no one is making a motion to approve this tonight. And so I'm just trying to help, uh, if you can help me understand the difference in process and timing between denying it versus sending it back with pretty clear direction.
If you deny it, then if another application comes forward, you'd have to resubmit a new application and it would restart the public hearing process and go through the whole process. There'd be new application fees. It would be an entirely new thing. Uh, but the reason I proposed it is I think it's clearer and it eliminates any question as to, you know, what we're like, people are saying things are or aren't allowed. And I think I can lay out pretty clearly through our existing criteria that it doesn't meet our requirements. And so I'm just, I think this is a very reasonable path forward. Um, and so our other path forward seems like a nicer option. Uh, it just remains it back to planning commission. Modifications can be made without new application fees. Planning commission can consider the comments that we've made here tonight. Um, but, you know, those questions got raised about, well, what do you really want to see back? And, you know, how should we do it? And we don't know what to do. So I think it's much more clear as to what to do if we deny the application.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion of the motion? All right, seeing none, uh, city clerk news, could we please have a roll call vote on, uh, giving staff direction to bring back a resolution of denial? Council member Lipton?
No.
Council member Dickinson?
No.
Council member Brown?
Yes.
Council member Lay?
Yes.
Council member Fagie?
No.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Council member Maloney, or member Tim Maloney?
No.
Thank you, everyone. So that takes us back to our main motion. Any further debate on the main motion? All right, seeing none, um, city clerk Muse, could we please have a roll call vote on a motion to remand this to planning commission? Council member Fagie?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Council member Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Council member Lay?
Yes.
Council member Dickinson?
Yes.
Council member Lipton?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Um, and so just a process question, um, to city attorney Kelly. So with the motion to remand to planning commission, do we need to take any further action on this agenda item tonight?
Um, no, mayor, the planning commission hearing, when the app, it sounds like the applicant is going to make some changes to the application. And after that is complete, then staff will publish new notice for that planning commission hearing. And, um, once planning commission has acted on it, then new notice will be published of hearing before the city council.
Thank you, city attorney Kelly. And so that takes us to our next agenda item this evening. Um, and so next up.
Did we have a break for ten minutes?
Yes, sorry about that. I've been meaning to take them at eight PM and I just lost track of time. We were having such good conversations. So we'll take a ten minute break. It's about nine o'clock, so we'll be back at nine, ten.
As soon as we get council member layback, we will get going. Councilmember Dickinson, can you please text message council member?
Text message council member just to make sure there's not a technical issue.
Yep.
Thank you. Hey, there he is. All right. Thank you, everybody. Welcome back. And our next topic this evening is discussion direction on our economic vitality strategic plan item number three. Evaluate a potentially revised business assistance program to align with the city's strategic goals for business attraction and city retention. So Megan Pierce, our economic vitality director is here and she'll tell us about the proposal.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. Tonight I will be presenting on one of our strategic plan initiatives that called for an evaluation and potential revision of the city's business assistance program. I'll probably refer to it both as business assistance program and BAP interchangeably as we go through tonight's presentation. The goal of the evaluation focused on aligning the existing program with our other strategies specifically related to business retention and attraction. I just wanted to note that this strategic plan item is also included in City Council's 2021 work plan. My comments tonight will be fairly brief on the background of this project, but all of the materials relating to the economic vitality's consideration of the initiative is also included in the agenda packet. The Business Assistance Program, which covers all of the city's business incentives, was originally established in 2007. It is structured as a formal program and the criteria are part of the Louisville Municipal Code. Starting in 2020, staff has established an annual report of the program that covers the city's financial investment in these incentives, businesses that have been attracted or retained, jobs created, and city revenues generated as a result of those efforts. A copy of the 2021 annual program report is attachment number four in your packet. Overall, staff feels the program has been successful, but in its current form, it provides more incentives to attracting new businesses in a range of industries. The main supporting action in the strategic plan to evaluate the business assistance program is number one, three, but this also does tie to several other strategic plan actions, specifically four, one, five, two, and five, three. So depending on which recommendations from tonight's discussion, the council may choose to advance, the EBC will revisit those items and determine whether we have additional tasks that need to be incorporated to those initiatives. The strategic plan action was targeted for Q3 2021 start, so we began work on this with the committee in July. Those discussions continued in August and September, during which staff also provided additional requested data and program suggestions. The original dialogue was about the existing program, what it had accomplished, as well as feedback staff had gathered from past and present applicants. Staff also provided information about other incentive programs, including Boulder, Longmont, and Erie. Those are the communities that have at least somewhat of a similar structure to us and that they have a formal application and program. The communities of Lafayette and Superior generally negotiate incentives on a case by case basis. The EBC also reviewed and provided direction on new incentives that related to other strategic plan outcomes in terms of occupancy of vacant space, quality local employment, and increased sustainability measures. Before diving into the five recommendations the EBC has advanced for council consideration, I did want to note that the committee first affirmed that it supported the continuation of a formal business assistance program that attempts to provide an objective process. So that really means that, except for what we're specifically going to talk about tonight, the program would remain intact much as you know it today. And we can consider each of these recommendations individually, so they could be taken as a package, they could be taken individually. Starting here, each slide will outline one of the five recommendations that the EBC supported advancing for council consideration. For each recommendation, I'll briefly describe sort of the issue or the reason for advancing it and what the recommendation would hope to accomplish or how it would specifically revise the program. On the revised application of timing requirement, our existing program requires that a business apply for and receive approval before signing a lease or closing on a property. From staff's perspective, this means the process takes a minimum of three to four weeks because we review the application, create an estimate, share it with the city manager, and then we schedule it for council consideration. There has been feedback on this that this sometimes causes a delay and creates constraints for the businesses who are pursuing applications. We had quite a bit of discussion on this at the EBC level and the strategy that we came up with as a recommendation is to require a business to still submit a completed application prior to a property commitment, but at that point, the business would be allowed to either wait for council approval, very similar to the current situation, or at the business's risk, they could go ahead and sign a lease or commit to a property, not knowing whether those incentives that they are applying for would be approved. Philosophically, I think what we're trying to do here is maintain that the BAP program is for incentives, you know, to try and incentivize business decisions. It's not a reward for already deciding to do business here. So I do think that still having the application completed prior to a property commitment maintains that philosophy, but it would create, you know, more of a process where an applicant could take the risk of proceeding with their property without knowing whether those incentives are approved. I still think probably a lot of applicants would wait for the approval process, but they would have an option. The second recommendation is to add a rebate of signed permit fees. So in our current program, eligible businesses may receive a forty to fifty percent rebate on building permit fees and construction use tax. Those rebates apply to tenant improvements as well as to businesses that may be constructing a new core and shell building. The rebates do not currently apply to signed permits. The recommendation here is that we would add signed permits on it as an item on which applicants could be recommended to receive rebates. They would be structured very similarly to those building permit fee and construction use tax because those are also paid on a signed permit application. I think this is a solid incentive and that new signage can be an added expense and burden, especially for a small business or an existing business that is relocating. And, you know, having attractive and appealing signage is important for our business districts. The third recommendation is to add a vacancy bonus incentive. The current program does not differentiate incentives whether a business is going to occupy an existing vacant space or construct a new commercial space. This is also one we spent a lot of time talking about because vacancies are not necessarily created by the city or even influenced by us. They're very much a result of the commercial market, but long-term vacancies do create a negative image for the city and long-term vacancies also mean that there's no revenue being generated to support city services. So what we've come up with is a recommendation to provide a bonus to an applicant that would be signing a lease to operate a retail business in a commercial space that has been vacant for two or more years. So those are some important caveats. It was determined that we would focus on retail because that ties to sales tax and generating revenue for city services. We also wanted to make sure that it is a lengthy vacancy, so it's not that a property is just in transition from one tenant to another. And new commercial space would not be eligible for this. So if it's brand-new commercial space and it's never been tenanted, then it would not be eligible. So it would have had to be that there was a prior licensed business in the space that tenant left and now it's been vacant for two or more years, which we would confirm through our business licensing. And what we came up with is supporting an incentive that is based on the amount of retail generating space, so a dollar per square foot capped at $50,000. Just as a bit of context of the 26 business assistance packages that have been approved between 2019 and today, I believe there would have been three businesses that would have been eligible for this as an additional incentive to what they were approved for. Fourth recommendation is to revise program criteria for relocating existing businesses. With our existing program criteria, how it works in terms of application is that it is, existing businesses in Louisville are eligible if they're relocating within our community, but they must physically expand their space. So let's say that they have 2,000 square feet now. To be eligible, they would have to be leasing a new space that was going to be more than 2,000 square feet. There are a lot of reasons that a business may move, but I think that it's important that we want to retain them and have them make that move within Louisville and not be incented to look at other communities just because incentives would be available to them there. So the recommendation is to allow a business that is relocating within Louisville to be eligible without necessarily increasing their physical space. So that example that if they had 2,000 feet and they were going to move to a space that was 2,000 square feet or 1,900 square feet, they would be eligible. I don't anticipate that this really adds a tremendous amount of fiscal impact because, you know, if they're not moving into a bigger space or they're not making a significant amount of improvements to that space, that still limits the amount of incentives. But I do think it's generally one of those things that it's a small thing that you can do for a small business that will probably be appreciated. And one caveat to this is that staff would still interpret how we apply increment in terms of calculating sales tax and consumer use tax rebate eligibility. So if they relocated, they wouldn't be eligible for rebates on sales tax and consumer use tax unless there was new tax being generated above what they had previously been remitting to the city. And the fifth recommendation is to create an administrative approval process. If you looked at the EBC materials from past meetings, you'll see that we went through some iterations about how exactly to structure this. Currently, all business assistance agreements require a presentation before city council and are adopted by resolution. Amendments to prior agreements are also approved by city council, though we generally do those on your consent agenda, especially if it's just a date change or an assignment of business entity. Their recommendation would be to allow the city manager to approve assistance agreements where the cap on rebates is under $50,000. We look to the city's existing purchasing policies for some guidance on where appropriately that cap could be set. The amendments for existing agreements would also be eligible for this administrative process as we've outlined it if the financial impact was less than 5% increase to the original agreement amounts. But most commonly, those amendments don't relate to changes in fiscal amounts. They mostly relate to date changes. I think this also sort of ties in with the first recommendation. It's an administrative efficiency, but it is also something that will have a positive impact for applicants, especially those eligible for a smaller amount of money. They'll have to spend less time in the process. So we would still have formal agreements with applicants and I would envision we would use the city manager's report to keep council apprised of new agreements that were approved under this type of process. So just in terms of next steps, I did include a new draft package in the materials for tonight, and that's just to sort of help you see if all of these items were incorporated, kind of how we would describe our eligibility and our criteria to applicants and how those things would intermix with our existing program. But that's not something that goes into play until we get your feedback and decide how to proceed. So we'd like to get your input and direction about the five proposed recommendations. We don't have anything here for formal approval tonight because if there are any of these recommendations that you want to advance, they would likely affect what is in the code for the business assistance program, and so we would probably need to advance those via an ordinance process. And that's all I have for my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Pierce. And so we'll turn it over to members of the public for this agenda item. If there are any comments you would like to make, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. All right, seeing no public comment on this agenda item, I'll turn it over to councilmember Dickinson, he's our chairman for the Economic Vitality Committee and just find out if you wanted to add anything to that great presentation.
Not in particular, I think it was a fantastic presentation and just mostly really curious to see, you know, reactions from council. There's obviously a lot of different things and certainly I can do my best to answer any questions about how we got to where we got for recommendations at least, but that's all.
Thank you. And then Mayor Proton Maloney or council member lay, committee members, you want to add anything? And maybe you didn't agree with the committee recommendations, so you can also have your own different ideas than what was presented.
Thank you. Sometimes it's easier just to raise my hand than raise my hand. It was a great presentation. You know, we're bringing this to you for your consideration. We debated these. We didn't always, well, some of these, I think we're, I am, we are convinced that we should move ahead. Other ones could probably use some discussion. So I hope we step through them so that we can at least, you know, understand where everybody is on this. But these are, these are some changes I think could be very useful. Thank you.
All right. So Director Pierce, if you wouldn't mind bringing up sort of like the, if there's like an overview slide that has them, so we can step through them one by one and see if folks have any comments on each one or if there are just other general comments. All right. Any discussion on the revised application timing requirement? This is the requirement that basically is letting people kind of commit to a property at their own risk. It doesn't look like there's any discussion under council member Brown.
Thanks. Director Pierce, can you say how this is either consistent or not consistent with what other communities with formal programs are doing?
So I think in terms of kind of structure, Boulder has the most similar program to what we do. And they approve, they do not have any tie to the signing of the lease. Their incentives are much more limited than ours in scope, so their max incentive is $100,000. And they approve everything through the city manager's authority administratively, but they have a formal application. They have criteria and eligibility, but they don't link any of it to lease signing. So this does seem to be something that's a little bit unique to us, but that's why I wanted to connect it to the sort of the philosophy that was described to me when I started is that we've structured it that we want you to come forward for incentives if you need financial assistance to help make, you know, Louisville your choice either to come here or to stay here. But that it's not meant as a reward for having already made that property commitment. So we use the property commitment, I think, as sort of that philosophical divider, but I haven't found that similarity in other programs.
So that's not, so I think the packet mentioned Longmont and Erie is also having formal programs, as I recall. And so they don't have any tie to signing the lease?
Not to my understanding.
Okay. Yeah, okay. No comments. I think that's, that's fine.
All right. So it looks like the group has consensus around bringing back this one for approval. So adding rebate of signed permit fees to the existing allowable rebate, any discussion? The one, I'm not seeing any hands up. The one issue that comes up from time to time from residents is on, so we currently rebate building permit fees. And these fees really are set to cover the cost of the service that we provide. So like in the case of building permit fees, like we review plans. So like in the case of building permit fees, like we review plans, inspectors go out and review things. So there is a real cost for the city. Sometimes people think like, oh, you're just making all this cash, but if you look at it, we did a really good study a few years back. Directors Akaro did, and it showed that the cost of the program really just covers the services that we provide in the program. And it really doesn't even cover overhead and things beyond that. So I do get questions from people on a relatively frequent basis. Inquiring about, you know, when you rebate these fees, does that make it so that when I pull my deck permit? Do I have to pay more to cover the cost of that program? Because you've set the, the fees in that program to cover the cost. And so council had, had made a policy a few years back that we would transfer general fund money. Or use general fund money to cover the cost of these fee rate rebates and ensure that we were not requiring fees to be inflated. In the building permit department. So I just want to confirm that we're still carrying out that practice. So that the little guy's deck doesn't end up costing more. Because these big, these big review processes, like when somebody comes in for a big process. It really does take planning staff, a lot of effort and time and building code and all that. They really do a lot of work. So can that, can we just confirm that for when it comes back that we really do have a process in place that ensures the general fund is paying for these rebates?
Sure. And that is my understanding that we don't, because we don't want to influence the, the, the setting of rates and fees for the city. Because a few outlier incentive agreements could definitely do that.
Thanks. Any other discussion on this point of adding sign fees in? All right. It looks like there's consensus around this one. The next topic is the vacancy bonus incentive. Any discussion on this topic? Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks, Mayor. I, yeah, I think this, this one is pretty important to, I'll just speak for myself, to, to me. And I think it, you know, could end up being. You know, a, a pretty big bonus for a pretty big space. But, but having a big space that's been vacant for two years is a big issue and a huge loss of revenue for us. So it's, you know, I don't think that we have too many ways of putting our finger on the scale. Thumb on the scale to, to change decisions that people are making. But I think this, this is a potential opportunity for that. And this, this bonus goes to, you know, the tenant, not the building owner. And so I think there's been some conversation about whether or not this is, you know, just, just gonna. Basically create a situation where there's increasing their rent because they know their tenant is going to get this bonus. One, I don't think this is a big enough bonus for to justify that. And two, that's just really not how it works as a market rate, rate for square footage and that kind of thing. And so, but it's been vacant for two years is the idea here. And if it's a little one thousand square foot place, it's barely any rebate or bonus. And if it's a big space, then I think it's a great, a great moment. So I just wanted, you know, if there are any questions about how we got to the numbers or any of that, you know, the, the cap. I'm not that, I, I don't think is that important again, if we, if we have a space that's a hundred thousand square feet. And it's vacant for more than two years, I think that would probably be worth that amount too. So any, any thoughts that you guys have on any of this vacancy bonus incentive would be great to hear.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate Chairman Dickinson's thoughts on that. I, I think incentivizing folks to come in and fill vacancies is a great idea. What I'm struggling. With is I just want to make sure that like, that if a, if a Louisville business moves. Into a vacant space. How is that accounted for? Because that would seemingly create another vacancy. And so, you know, are Louisville businesses eligible? Only when they sort of upsize their business or the upsize the, the space. Maybe help me, maybe someone either Director Pierce or, or maybe Chairman Dickinson can. Help me understand sort of that aspect of it.
It looks like Councilmember Dickinson unmuted himself, but then Megan Pierce as well.
Yeah, I, I would just say that. Yes, the, it, it would be eligible for, it's more about the space, not about who's moving into it. So if you're occupying a vacant space, then you would have an opportunity to get that bonus. And like you're saying, of course, were I to be moving from one place in Louisville to another place in Louisville, I would be creating a vacancy while I fill one. But this is only for long-term vacancies, right? So I'd be creating a brand-new vacancy, which could be an issue. But the bonus is only for filling long-term vacancies. And again, no one's going to move across town for this bonus. That would be cost prohibitive, like so it would more be. If this was something they're looking at doing and it was a valuable space, then that would, then they'd get the bonus.
I guess the only, I, I'm not sure that that's necessarily true. I mean, I think people do relocate their business within, within. Within Louisville, there have been BAPs that we have approved where people have relocated within Louisville.
Well, for sure. I'm just saying they wouldn't do it for this, right? That wouldn't be.
Yeah. And so, so I just want to make sure it's an actual incentive for people filling. I mean, the, the, the intent is great. The intent is we've got a vacant space, we want to fill it. And let's provide some additional money so people will come in and fill that space. The problem that I have is just, it doesn't, it seems like if someone is creating a vacancy in order to fill a vacancy. That maybe that vacancy, maybe, maybe they shouldn't get that bonus because it doesn't seem to be. Fulfilling the intent of the incentive, if that makes sense.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Yeah, this is another one of those, you know, doubles in the detail. So I, I agree with, you know, the direction of Council Brown's thinking. We had similar discussions at the EVC meeting. You know, the, all of these elements of the BAT program need to be administratively exercised. And so I would expect that the director of economic vitality will look at these and understand the impact. They, these aren't, you know, these aren't a right. This, this is something that is given as a privilege for something that's a benefit to the city. And so that decision has to be made at the time when it makes sense. So I, I, I think, Council Brown, I, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, just move from one location to another. Does that mean you get an incentive? Well, what if it's a really, a better location? For that particular business? What if you're going from, you know, somewhere where you get no visibility to someplace, you get a lot of visibility. Now you're driving a lot more business. Maybe that is, maybe that is one of those things where it makes sense. If you don't reverse, I would say absolutely not. So that's where I say there needs to be an administrative determination. You know, based upon the application. The, the other thing, the other thing I think is really important with this is we added the, the term a retail business. Because we wanted to make sure that we were also capturing the sales tax portion and not just being a commercial business. Or office space or whatever it might be, moving from one location to the other. So that's, that's a condition that we put in here in the last, which I think is very important. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Proton Maloney. So I, I totally agree, having something to try to address commercial vacancy. We all agree, this is on our work plan. This is something that's important to all of us. And, and so I think some more discussion around this will be really good. When I was thinking about the way you worded this, and I really appreciate the hard work on it because it's not, it's not easy to get this right. I kind of like divided the area into zones. So for example, if a builder speculates and builds a speculative industrial building. I'm not particularly interested in doing an additional bonus. But that's not the issue that community members are bringing to our attention. And so I think. I, I kind of played around with different ideas of like, should we target areas of the city? I, I mean, I see that you all recommended that we target retail, but I think it's more nuanced. And I think that there are problems with saying two-year vacancy. So like, for example, alfalfa's, I don't know, has it been vacant for two years yet? It's, it's a problem already. Like I want it to apply to alfalfa. So to me, it's more these large format spaces that are really tricky to fill. It's not so much two years. And then like furthermore, like Sam's Club is not vacant at all. And I still think we should provide an incentive to redevelop at the retail that's planned at Sam's Club. It's, it's, it's not vacant, it's actively occupied, but it's not doing what the community expects. Or hopes for the location, like it's not the dream. And I think there's an opportunity to do public-private partnerships or to do some kind of a program. To enable like the outcomes that we want. The Cinnabar not vacant at all. It's, it's a problem. So I, 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 I have a list of properties that are sort of the ones that come up. And I'm not trying to pick on people by listing out their property. Like I get that that's like emotional and upsetting. But it's more that these are opportunities that I feel community members would really like us to partner on and try to do something different there. So that it can be productive retail space again. So the, the ones I hear about all the time are the grain elevator, Sam's Club, Kohl's, Cinnabar, Alfalfa's, Wildwood Guitar and Henry's. So I mean, a lot of those don't meet this criteria for a vacancy bonus that are laid out here. So to me, it's not quite right yet, but I, I love the idea. And I, I think more discussion around this, like more council ideas, more community ideas around this will help us get this right. On how we could possibly go about doing this. And I'm not sure that your cap is appropriate. Like so, for example, if we're going to do some kind of public-private partnership at Sam's Club. Like we may need to commit that we'll build a dog park in the parking lot. That can go with some really cool like food truck, food hall thing that they have planned. So we would have to pay for a dog park. That's a lot more than fifty thousand dollars. So anyway, I just, I, I'm not sure that the level of incentive matches the reality. And then the other piece of it is that it says it's not for new buildings. And so the other place where that gives me pause is like Kohl's. So like, we approved commercial pads for Kohl's and Sam's. Like we added additional density in there so they could build some strip pads in the parking lot per their request. So like if there's some way to broker a deal that gets us micro center, if we can do something with the strip pads. I'm happy to provide incentives for the new strip pads as well. So I guess I think it's on, I think it's on a track. I'm really happy that the group's talking about this, but I think there needs to be more work on this particular one to get it as a home run. Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, it's really good feedback, Mayor. I think that. That this is, as, it's like, you know, one arrow in the quiver, right? I think most of those examples, you know, someone wanted to fill the alfalfa space, they could potentially get huge rebates without, without the vacancy bonus. So this is, you know, because this is one of our major issues, trying to add something on top of. This doesn't prevent us from providing a dog park, right? This doesn't prevent all, actually pretty much every great idea that you just talked about. Like this doesn't prevent it. This is just something additional. So if you were thinking about any of those ideas, well, if you specifically did it at Kohl's, you'd get this bonus. If you specifically did the grain elevator, you'd get this bonus. And as a public service announcement, I saw Henry's was open the other day. So whoa, apparently Henry's is back in business.
I'll see you there after the meeting, Councilmember Dickinson.
Exactly. I'm like, I'm like thirty feet away. But, uh, but so I think, and, and then again, you brought up the idea of like speculative buildings, right? So I'm going to build a building and then let it sit vacant for two years and then there's going to be some bonus. So a couple of things, I actually don't mind that entirely because again, the bonus is going to the occupant, not the developer. So it doesn't even bother me that much, but that's why we put that in. There's no, it wasn't going to go to new businesses or new. Construction, because we didn't want people just like building a speculative building and then getting a bonus for it sitting vacant. But I hear what you're saying about maybe wanting to be able to apply this to, you know, a vacant lot out on like Highway forty-two. For instance, those pads that are, you know, vacant pads, but, but it's not a vacant building. So I, I think you're right that it, it, it could be tweaked. And I think again, your original comment, your very first comment is we're all pushing the same direction in this. We all think vacancies and, and certainly long-term vacancies are an issue. This was our effort to try to focus some attention. And even from a marketing perspective, to be able to put out there, hey, we have this program to fill vacancies. Here are the ten that apply in Louisville, that you get a, you'd get a vacancy bonus if you occupied any of these ten spaces. And so it might help a business pick one of those instead of a similar one. And, and so I think there's maybe ways to improve it. And if you have, you know, specific changes that you think would be more effective, that'd be awesome.
Well, I wonder, thanks for that additional input and clarification, because that really helps my thinking. I wonder, because you were saying, well, you could get a really big incentive for, for filling alfalfa's or whatever. So this would just be on top of that. I, I don't think people, and you were saying nothing precludes those other types of creative thinking. I don't think it's obvious as to how to engage with the city on any kind of creative thinking like that, like any kind of public private partnership like that. There's no, like, here's the form that you fill out and then there's a process. And then you take it to DORA and then you get answered this question based on that. So I think maybe if we identified the critical spaces that are causing. The moral decay of our society. No, if we could, the ones that are making people feel bad, that's all I mean. The ones that are dragging people's positivity down. And maybe just put out there to the world that we're willing to partner in a public-private partnership on those properties. To get them filled with retail spaces, maybe just putting out that information to the world would be a positive thing. Like we are willing to negotiate non-traditional types of assistance packages or public-private partnerships on these properties.
Yeah, we have on our agenda for next Friday, basically that exact conversation about priority locations and, and other, other things. So I think this is, you know, I think this is, is a good tool. I don't think it accomplishes everything. I kind of was making that point of like, I don't, I don't know how much we're putting our thumb on the scale of a decision. But it is matching our desire and intention with some incentive program. And I think this is just one of many tools that we are going to need to be successful in filling the, let's say, ten. Eyesores that we have in, in town that people do talk about frequently. I don't think this is going to do it. I don't think this is like, oh, okay, now we're solved, we're done. Cool, move on to the next topic. All of our vacancies will get filled, but I do think it's, I do think it's a valuable tool. And so some tweaking might be good.
So did I hear you right? And the committee members are committed to taking up sort of that other issue of identifying the critical vacancies. And then bringing back additional tools to council to address those, which could be additional, like negotiated incentive programs or something else. I see two people of three nodding and one person hesitating. Okay, everyone is nodding. Okay, that makes me feel pretty good. Any other? So is everybody then good on this one? Or do we feel like there's further refinement? Megan, through any of the discussion from Councilmember Brown's comments that we're kind of on a different track than mine or mine? Do you feel like we need any additional discussion on this one before it comes back?
I think we, you know, I think there are a couple of options if we did have concerns about relocation. So causing a vacancy, I do think there is, you know, staff does review applications and works with applicants. And makes recommendations on these. So we could have sort of that element that, you know, we really make a recommendation as to whether. Filling a long-term vacancy but creating a vacancy is still something that is rewarded under, under this element. Or we could simply make this eligibility for new businesses to Louisville only. I mean, that would, that would be a very clear way to focus it on. So it, it could be an existing business owner that's going to open a new business concept, right? So they have one restaurant, they're going to open a second restaurant. I would see that as eligible under that guise. So that would be a very formal structured way to do it. Or, you know, just understanding what some of the questions and concerns are. I agree. I think there could be some instances where. A business is taking advantage of a long-term vacancy. It's a good decision for them. It's, it's a better location and the vacancy they're creating may actually be very easy to fill. Versus the long-term vacancies are, tend to be struggles because of, of market reasons. So those are just a couple of ideas of, of how we could handle that in terms of recrafting this based on your input. And, and then we can certainly take a look at the cap. I think we, we did make some changes to how we were proposing this to council out of the last meeting. So the EVC hadn't necessarily reacted to the cap I provided. We were kind of using the Kohl's example and our discussion polls is about eighty-three thousand square feet. But I wanted to get some input on council's appetite for amount of this potential incentive, once you understood how it might work.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, just to.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, uh, just to put a little finer point, I don't, I'm not against. The idea of a business relocating, uh, from within Lewisville and getting this incentive. Um, to your point, I think Director Pierce, if it's, if they're creating a vacancy that's easy to fill, I think about like. You know, choosing hypothetical and random businesses for a moment, like fantasy orchids over here on Cherry. If they were to set to decide that they wanted to fill Kohl's, like, yeah, let's give them the incentive, right? Because it's like, you know, smallish business. Filling a gigantic warehouse of orchids. And who wouldn't like to see a whole or warehouse full of orchids? Um, but anyway, so that that's, I mean, I I think the the intent there would be to be met, but what I wouldn't want. Is for like King Supers to move from its current location across town to Kohl's. And then have us give them a giant incentive when they just created another giant vacancy, right? So I I'm sure there's a way for you all to kind of work together and craft, craft something that would. Um, be consistent with the. For this particular idea. Anyway, I'll leave it there.
All right. So it sounds like general consensus to move forward on this and maybe a little thought around the vacancy creation. Um, when it comes back to us, more thought, not to say there wasn't already, but a little additional thinking on that. Anything else on this one? Okay. I think there was another one. Um, revise, uh, for relocation, any discussion on this topic? Help out our existing businesses if they're staying in town, give them a little benefit for that. Looks like general consensus. No need to prolong anything that doesn't need to be prolonged at nine fifty-two. Uh, administrative approval is the best idea I've ever seen. Why did you cap it at fifty thousand only? No, I heard your explanation. That was good. Um, any other, any other feedback on this one? I think if there's clear criteria that the staff are applying and it's administratively approved, I think that makes it better for everyone. Um, involved in the process. So I appreciate you for bringing this forward. Councilmember Brown?
Can, I just, I I don't disagree with this. I just wanna make sure, I I think. Uh, Director Pierce mentioned that you would use the city manager's report or something along those lines to keep council apprised of. These types of agreements, because sometimes we get these smaller business assistance packages, and I do like. Uh, I do like to see them, um, that takes up time on the council agenda. So maybe it's not the best use of our time, but. Would be nice to know, um, kind of what's what's going on in the background on this. So if either through the city council, the city manager's report, or maybe the consent agenda. Or something along those lines, some sort of, uh, staff or communication to council would be great, so.
Agree, and and I think it's important to recognize the businesses, especially some of the smaller ones receiving smaller incentives. So I would want you to know about that. A lot of times by getting in the packet, they also get some local news notoriety. So I think it would be. We would envision probably packaging them for you in in one of those methods that you mentioned, so that you have that information in a timely manner. And you can also reach out to those businesses as well.
Thanks, Director Pierce. All right. So this one sounds great to folks. Is there another one, um, Director Pierce, or is that the other? Okay, so I had, I had one, um, that I think will be highly unpopular. But I'm bringing it up anyway as a revision discussion. I just think it's a worthwhile discussion to have. And I'm just putting out there that I don't think it's gonna go anywhere, because I don't want people to feel too, you know, upset. But I think this is really something we should talk about. So we currently have more jobs in our city than we have employees in our city. And in the city of Boulder, they currently have more jobs in the city of Boulder than they have employees living in the city of Boulder. And so I feel like it's pretty counterproductive to be providing business assistance packages. To large primary employers that are occupying speculative industrial or or office space. Um, I understand. You know, this, like I said at the beginning, if I had my meme, I could put up the, um, the puffin and the unpopular opinion puffin, and I get it. And that's me, um, but I think it's an important conversation, because we talk a lot about the housing side of the housing issue. But jobs is the other side of the housing issue. And like when Google came to Boulder, that made the housing problem worse. When, um, these big corporations move into our areas, it does put additional pressure on housing. Um, like, just like, uh, Ford announced, they're gonna be moving, uh, to Louisville, just south of Louisville. And like, it's it's already having an impact on the housing market, and like, people are getting excited. And they're they're in a very different housing position than they are. So they're like. Happy that their housing prices are going up. Um, so anyway, I think this is just something we have to talk about in the context of, um, our jobs pop balance. And whether it's it's responsible to be offering incentives to primary employers at this time. Or even like, when we have, um, the business, the, um, the industrial part, there was a period, it was really, really struggling. But it's not like it's filling in full, and that's not an issue that our company's facing. So why are we incentivizing? Location into spaces that are being built speculatively, and there's no issue filling. Like, we're just. Giving away tax revenue, and I don't feel like the butt four is actually being satisfied in those cases. Um, so the retail, I totally get it. Like, it's really tough. It's the Wild West. Everybody's offering big incentives. Um, but I just think it's a different conversation, um, on primary employees. And I get it, like, they spend money in town. It's an important source of revenue, but. I'd just be interested to understand if my colleagues would be supportive of, rather than continuing to offer, um, incentives for primary jobs. Maybe we could seek to do a intergovernmental agreement with the other communities in Boulder County that we could all agree to stop doing this. And just say, like, everybody can do what they want on, uh, retail. But we're gonna stop offering incentives on, uh, primary employment until we get to our twelve percent affordable goal on housing. So, anyway, just an idea. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Well, you wrapped a lot in there. I I think, uh. Well, I I appreciate your optimism that we could have an intergovernmental agreement along those lines. Uh, but I, but I reflect upon the, uh, economic vitality visit that we did last week at the Pro's Closet where. Uh, the CEO was saying Lewisville was the perfect location to be able to attract employees. And so knowing that some of those employees were coming from Boulder and many of them coming from Denver. You know, I I I'm not sure what problem we're trying to solve here. I mean, uh, a primary, uh, primary employer business like that drives a lot of our revenues. And just what we saw earlier, uh, in the discussion, we were talking about the the foundry. The difference between residential and commercial is a big difference as far as income coming into the city. So. Having a discussion, exploring all sides of it, I'm fine with that. Um, but putting it in context of the BAP program probably should be a later discussion, in my opinion.
Any other thoughts? All right. Well, I I led off with that. I knew it would be unpopular, but I do think it's worth having the conversation and it. You know, put, sometimes you put something out into the universe to just get people to think about the context of our other conversations. So it's now.
Mayor, I I will just say, I don't oppose it as much as you might think I do. Um, I I I think there's a lot of, um, reason, uh, to what you're saying. Um, I think, I think you make make some good points that. You know, that that may not be something, again, we want to be incentivizing things that are hard to get. And if we don't think that's hard to get, and we think we're gonna get it regardless, or we don't even wanna get it. I mean, so I think that's where I start to worry is like, we really not, do we wanna go down that road? By saying, we don't even, we don't even want that last spot taken, or we don't want that, that building that has been built speculatively but hasn't been filled. We don't wanna incentivize that. So I get, I'm a little concerned. So I I don't agree with it at this current point, but I actually do think there's a lot of merit with with what you said.
Councilmember Brown?
Thanks. This, this is a very interesting discussion, and thank you for starting this conversation, Mayor. I think based on council, uh, Mayor Proton's comments about employers saying that. Um, Lewisville is a perfect place to attract employees. Um, I think it's interesting to think about whether we should be incentivizing something that employers wanna do anyway. Um, I think, you know, incentives are generally for driving things that are maybe less attractive. Or, you know, to get some some sort of policy outcome if the market is gonna give us what we want anyway. Um, then, you know, maybe we should spend more of our money on attracting retail. Um, or some other sales tax driving entity, but it's a, but it's a, it's an interesting discussion to have, and, um. Um, I'll just leave it there for now.
Would council members be frustrated with me if I just quietly talked to other council members in other communities? I mean, you said, you said, Mayor Proton Maloney, that you appreciated my optimism. I just, I don't know if I'm being optimistic, or if I. Or if people would wanna do something like this. Um, are people okay with me just feeling it, feeling out the room from other councils on this particular topic? Mayor Proton Maloney?
I I don't, I mean, I don't have any problems with that, but, you know, I I do note that I think that. You know, we've seen what some of our situations in the last few years where I believe some of the communities around us have been predatory. They've taken advantage of things that that we've done that might have delayed certain situations. So I I'm, I think you have more hope than I do, because, you know, I I I see what Lafayette did, just to pick on one, and. Um, I don't see that kind of agreement being something that'll ea- easy to come by, but.
You're probably right. Any other, um, discussion on this point? Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, I mean, I I'm thinking about that. I, the far be it from me, uh, mayor to, to. Try to put myself between you and your colleagues from other jurisdictions. I, you're gonna, you have comment, you know, you have discussions with people every day. About this kind of stuff. That's only appropriate. Um, I I think the one thing that that makes me a little bit, gives me a little bit of pause, though, is. That. There may be other, there may be other things. That. That might be. More, maybe more deserving of that kind of intergovernmental treatment. I don't know what they are. But it may be something that, that the EDC might think about. Too. I I understand this is important. You've raised it tonight. It's important to you. It it could be important for all of us. I just, it's it's one idea of a variety that we're kind of bouncing around, and I'm just wondering. Out loud, whether that's. The most meritorious of even ideas that you have. You know, I mean, is it, I I don't know, maybe worth, maybe worth tossing around in EDC before we send you forth. If you're asking us whether. You know.
Well, so maybe.
An agreement.
So you're offering up that EDC can think of other ideas too. I'm like, hey, what would be helpful if we cooperated with our neighbors?
Sure.
That would be great.
I I think that's right. I think the danger is exactly what we've talked about is that we've gotten, um. Yeah, we we we've sometimes gotten hammered. Um, but intergovernmental cooperation on some of the stuff might be useful, might be helpful. So I I I think that would be an interesting idea, frankly.
And then Mayor Proton Maloney, is that a residual hand? Yes. Any other to- thoughts on this topic? Any other, people can also offer their other crazy ideas they thought of while reading the packet? Any other suggestions? All right, seeing none. Um, thank you, um, to Director Pearson. We'll look forward to seeing that come back to us. Uh, with the direction we've provided tonight. Thanks so much for that. Next up, we have discussion direction on open space zoning scope of work. Um, so I think Director Mosley will be taking this one.
Yes, can you hear me?
We sure can.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Nathan Mosley, Director of Parks, Recreation and Open Space. I'm gonna do my best to keep this concise and quick. So myself and Emma Bridnell, Open Space Superintendent, are here tonight to discuss the next phase of provoke proposed zoning on open space parcels. I'm gonna turn my video on as well. Sorry. Uh, I'm actually here in a wait with all of you guys, so, um. Staff's been planning to bring this forward this fall and recently presented the most current information and recommendations to Open Space Advisory Board in August. OSAB unanimously approved that recommendation that is included in the council communication. Staff's goal tonight is to finalize details regarding these parcels and move forward with survey work and bring these properties forward. To the Planning Commission and City Council for formal zoning as soon as possible. The council communication provides some background information on previous zoning efforts and also staff's recommendations. So just to recap those quickly. Um, staff does recommend moving forward with zoning as identified in the council communication. For Dutch Creek Open Space, Walnut Open Space, and the Dolphin Bar Warmburg Open Spaces. Um, and then staff recommendation is also to delay zoning on the Coal Creek. Portion, uh, along Dillon Road, the Olson Properties and Lake Park, based on the information that is included in the memo. So with that, um, happy to answer any questions that council members might have or any feedback. That you might have, um, regarding directions, so we can move this forward, uh, and get these additional properties zoned. Um, I can also share, um, my screen.
So first, let's get public comment on this. If any members of the public would care to comment on our open space zoning project, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. Seeing none, take it back over to council members, uh, discussion. So I just wanna thank council, um, for continuing to keep this on the work plan. This has been something that I've tried to champion through the process unsuccessfully for many years. Uh, but it's something I know we're all committed to, because it's a requirement in our charter that we zone open space properties as open space. Um, so, um, I would like us to go through each one, just to ensure there's consensus on the layout. And I do have a number of comments, and so I apologize that the hour is late, but there's never an hour too late for this exciting topic. Um, so if you could please go to page four hundred, uh, four hundred twenty-two of the packet. Yeah, this one right here, Dutch Creek Open Space. Um, any discussion from council members on this proposed layout? And I'm happy to kick us off. So there's an area on the far west side, um, that I believe is in play on the golf course. Um, so I just wonder if you could talk to me a little bit about how you selected that boundary line, um, that. I'm not a golfer, but my understanding is there is part of that area that is not out of bounds.
Okay, um, we basically took the current configuration of the golf course and then added a twenty-foot buffer. In order to create that new survey line. So, you know, we would double check and just make sure, uh, that we're not impeding the ability of the golf course. To to function properly or do any of the work that they need to do without, um, impacting open space. Um, but that's where we came up with that line was the, with the boundary of the golf course plus a twenty-foot buffer.
Okay, so, um, I I don't think we'll resolve it in this meeting, but I think we could give sort of the policy direction on it, so that you could bring back the proper zoning. So if any of that is in-play area, it's the golf course. And if it's not, it can, it's open space. That makes sense.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney, have I properly defined the terms that the golfers would use? Like, I know there's like an out-of-bounds and the rough and all of these different areas. And I know a lot of balls go into that area right there. So, um, I just wonder if you could clarify if I scoped it correctly.
If that is out of bounds.
Oh, okay. But part of the golf course?
I don't know the answer to that question. It's out of bounds as far as the the golf is concerned, but that doesn't mean it's off the golf course.
Right. I mean, our intent was with the twenty-foot buffer to kind of take the area of the golf course and provide a little bit of additional buffer in case they needed to do work. And that wouldn't impact open space properties or require, uh, open space permitting. Um, but, but, so if. The out-of-bounds line is closer than what we're depicting here. You want the line in closer to the golf course.
Um, we want the golf course playable area to remain not open space.
Right, and then. Okay.
Yeah, I would say they've accomplished that with this drawing. There's no, there's no green area that's in the playable space on that, on those two holes.
Okay, that area, I I got some different feedback from some golfers on that area on the west. So sorry if that's bad intel. So just verify that, and, um, that looks great. And then this map, um, is slightly different than the large-scale map, um, I think, uh, but the resolution on. Um, I think, uh, but the resolution on the large scale map wasn't perfect. Um, in this area, so if we could just agree that this is, this close-in map is what you'll bring back this version.
Yes.
Great, any other discussion of this particular open space for zoning? All right, one down, next, next slide please. Um, so this one, um. Uh, Walnut Open Space, in the previous discussion, um, we had talked about that. Uh, utility easement that runs between the houses being included and the other trail access um, being included. And so my preference would be to include them.
The, the red?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, currently, I mean, we excluded that, I mean. It's not really being used as an access point. I mean, that could actually be vacated potentially. We included the access point on the south side, the north side, and then there's access points on both of the east and west side. So, you know, because of the current configuration there, it didn't seem like that would be a necessary access point. Um, it is city land, uh, but it's not currently maintained as such. And it's, I mean, the general resident wouldn't even know that that's land that's accessible to them. So depending on the direction from City Council, um, we can move forward with. Um, bringing forward a divestment of that property to the adjacent neighbors or look at including it as open space. Um, but I think that that would complicate the zoning of the walnut open space at this time.
So first, I just wanted to talk about the trail head that is off of Walnut Court, like that is definitely an access, like I ride my bike there.
Right here on the east side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Further north, the red box on the east side that's further north.
Yeah.
So like if there were dogs off leash there, or if there were people planting vegetable gardens there. Like I would think we would enforce the open space rules in that space. And so if we want to enforce the open space rules, then it should be open space.
Well, I'm not sure that we would allow people to do those things, even if it's parkland. The, the thought process we went through here was, you know, the line has to be drawn somewhere of where it transitions from open space. To just land that's owned by the city, and in this case, this is parkland. You know, so we kept it at the current boundary line of that property. So I think this takes into account four different current parcels that would be joined together under this new open space zoning. But on that east side, we just used the parcel line there as opposed to drawing the line. Further to the east between that parcel and the parcel of the trail that goes out to McKinley.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think I'm, I follow. Director's logic on, on the, uh, part on the, the north east. That, that parkland right there, I'm not sure why we, I guess I, I'm an interested mayor. Why the need to, to grab that as, as open space?
Yeah, so um, I think philosophically, if you read the city charter and you look at like the requirements for zoning open space. Like trail heads and accesses to open space and like paths and corridors are open spaces defined by it. So this is like contiguous to the open space and then ac- access for the open space. I don't see why we would create um. Basically like a stepchild category for it. I think if we recognize like this is what it is and this is how we maintain it, it's just much easier to communicate. It's more consistent with the charter. I, I think if we can broadly have this discussion, maybe even not about this particular one, then it, it makes the conversation on all the other ones easier. So folks aren't in agreement, that's absolutely fine. But it seems like the trails that access the open space are open space. Councilmember Lipton?
Yes, does anybody know whether this was originally dedicated to the city as open space? Red areas?
I spent about two hours trying to find that out and I was not able to.
Yeah, has, you know, I, Nathan, has, has these recommendations go, been gone over by OSAB?
Yeah.
They have, and they.
What was their recommendation on this one?
Uh, what you're saying right now was approved by the Open Space Advisory Board.
But what were you saying?
The green area, it was approved.
Correct.
But, but not the red areas.
Correct, that would say is parkland.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I guess my feeling is I, I don't want to do a land grab and just color everything green. Unless there's a absolute purpose and it's been vetted by the Open Space Board. And we're gonna make this change, I think we should ask them for their advice. And also, you know, there are consequences to declaring. Parcels open space and it's not just, you know, how they're maintained, but whether we can maintain them and maintain them for what purpose. I think, I think we have to be careful about just throwing everything into the open space category without having a, having a plan and understanding. Consequences of those plans, getting the input from OSAB. If it takes a little longer to do this one, then fine, it'll take a little bit longer, but I'd like to have some better process.
So I think that it's um, important to move ahead, so I will drop the request to include the red areas. I don't agree with the comments that we can't maintain um, ornamental entryways in open space. Is that explicitly called out in the charter, like it explicitly.
I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody suggested that, Mayor.
Okay, that's exactly what I thought you suggested, so.
No, I never said, no, I never said that. That's fine.
You said we won't be able to maintain property, like you just said that, so.
I said, I said, we need to understand. The implication of making the commitment to maintain that property and for what purpose. But my point is, I think this needs a little bit more, you know, perhaps time embedding and bring it back to the Open Space Board.
Okay, but um, I don't think that that should hold up zoning the rest of the open space. Do you agree with that?
That's fine.
Great, Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, sounds like you're on a fine path forward. I, I just say that, you know, that, that trail continues east. Yeah, and so I don't really understand why, you know, we would stop at that, you know, I think, I think. I like where the green ends right now, because that trail keeps going and there's another access point. That exact trail to get to the open space, I just, I guess I'm missing. Why this area would be red, not the, the continuation of that path to McKinley.
My, so when we talked about this before, we, we talk about this every two years and I hope this is the last time we talk about it. But it won't be because we'll have to talk about it again to do all the paths at some future date, but I would include the entire trail. But I mean, we should understand what land we own, how we plan to maintain it, what it's designated as. And right now, we don't have any designation for most of our space.
I'll just say, I think that we could maintain it. However, we decide to, it doesn't have to be zoned in order to maintain it in the way that you're describing potentially, Mayor. But I do think that once you zone it, it can't go back. So, you know, maybe some of these continued outliers, because I will say some of the feedback from OSAB is that they, they tend to like. Large contiguous parcels as opposed to little pieces here or there, so that's the feedback that they've given. So they liked this representation and they liked that this large portion of property was zoned as open space. Uh, at least in the conversations we've had more recently, they're not as concerned about those other. Um, and then we could choose to maintain them in different ways, kind of depending on the direction from City Council and residents.
I appreciate the feedback. I don't feel like the Open Space Board has been given the context of the city charter. And it's been pretty one-sided the way it's been presented to them. I've read the meeting minutes, so I appreciate the feedback, but. And, and I don't think this will go anywhere tonight, so I guess I won't push it. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess I'm, I'm getting a real resistance from staff to even have this conversation. Um, my, my sense is that the city charter, uh, the mayor has a particular read on the city charter. I don't understand staff's objections, um, you know, even the smallest of green areas are important to, to particular. To particular neighborhoods and, and residents and, and it sounds like our open space department. Um, is afraid of designating things as open space. Because they afraid that they might want to do something else besides have open space there. That's concerning to me.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Brown, I, I don't think there's any need to attack staff. And their good faith, honestly, it's out of line. So, and I think it, at this hour, Mayor, with all respect. I, I'm kind of concerned about, we're just on the second property of how many that we need to get through. How much, you know, I mean, I, I think the question, one of the questions is quality of the discussion that we're gonna have. You're raising good points. These, I know, because you have raised this issue, as you've said, for some years now. Trying to get this, this, um. The, the process done, I just want to make sure we get. You know, we have the kind of discussion that you want, that solves the problem.
Thanks, Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Brown. I'll just put a pause, I see your hand and, and I under, I hope you two can take it offline. I, I think there's a misunderstanding that's occurred, so I'll just try to deescalate that. But um, it, it is frustrating because we did give specific direction on these properties and I did go back and read the meeting minutes. So it is frustrating to have to re-litigate this um, for the manyth time. And so I'm sorry if that frustration is coming through from my end, but it looks like we can move forward with what's shown here. Uh, and then a future council can deal with the other remnants. So the next page, please. Any discussion on this and the, and the layout in the darker green areas? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lee, uh. If it's okay, I will hold staff accountable when I believe they're out of line. Thank you.
Any um, comments on the green lines on the map that we have in front of us? So the consensus is to include the ditch areas and everything is shown? Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just trying to get clarification on. The, this is my first time through this process, um, and so I'm just trying to get a good understanding of. Obviously, we're just, it wasn't included at some point. And we're just kind of fixing the obvious, like it is, for me, I ride my bike by this all the time, I run by this all the time. And it is all in my mind, open space, right? And so it sounds like all we're doing is taking the space that is clearly experienced as open space. And declaring it open space, because that just makes sense. And the only potential issue is that we might be, um, like in this particular one where we go. Up north there towards the, what becomes then park area, which. I'm trying to get, again, that distinction, um, between that purple line um, of green to red. But the care in which we might be able to, uh, the, the maintenance we might do, the things we might be able to do, the changes we might be able to make. Start to, are obviously different between a park and an open space, and so there's potential concern. That we're limiting our ability to whatever, you know, you've been retaining walls or whatever that we might want to do in the future. Nope, so I see your, so I'm just trying to understand, because of course, like when I look in the southwest area near Cherry Street. Yeah, I've, again, I walk by that all the time. It is open space in my mind, so we're just making it open space, like, no big deal. What is the possible, what am I not seeing that would be a possible negative outcome of turning that into open space?
So the big motivation for me of following through this process is the city charter. The big thing that we're limiting is that if we wanted to rezone this to some other category or use it in, like, let's say we wanted to put. A police station there one day, we would have to go to the voters because it's zoned as open space. So we're limiting our governmental ability to put facilities and like, rezone it as housing or something like that. It doesn't keep us from doing it, it just sends it to a vote of the people to do it. So if we wanted to say, we're gonna turn all of this into housing, if it's zoned as open space, we would have to put that to the people. Or if we wanted to build a police station, but things like, there are lots of types of things that are called out in the charter um, as open space. And ornamental gateways is in there, like there's even irrigation allowed in se- in settings, so there's different types of open space. Preserve, act and visitor, so it doesn't limit like picnic tables and we have an off-leash dog park in open space. We built baseball fields on open space, like it doesn't limit a lot of kinds of things. So, I, I mean, I, I see this as carrying out the charter and ensuring to people that this land will not be developed. Um, in some way other than open space without them approving it through a vote.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I think I'm understanding and certainly, you know, big, this, this particular one, the spaces are so small. It seems sort of silly to me, but of course, the previous one was a very large space and two ago. Near the, near the golf course is a very large space. Um, so again, I, I, I assume those couldn't be developed and now it seems like what we are confirming and, and that's fine. And I think I, I think I have an understanding, so I'm fine with this one, all in my comments uh, for this particular slide that we're on with them. I'm fine with the dark green on this one.
The, the other piece on it, Councilmember Dickinson, just to add in, is that like our parks rules and our open space rules are slightly different. And so like ensuring that we know what our land is is also an important thing, so that we know like this is a park, this is open space. So um, it is important that we identify it properly.
Yeah, for sure, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm confused when it's like a little sliver, like clearly that's. That's never gonna be a soccer field, that's a tiny little sliver along an edge, like, it is what it is, I don't, I don't get the benefit of what we're doing. But I also am not against it, like that's clearly open space, so cool, I'm, thumbs up, that's, that's open space, I agree.
Yeah, and I think the Councilmember Lipton's point, like, so we should go through the process, like do all the ones we agree on. But then the next process will be like all these remnants, we'll need to understand better, like. Did the general development plan dedicate them as open space, um, like all those other questions? So it gets, as we get to smaller and smaller properties, it does get trickier and trickier, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. Because if we don't understand what our spaces are, it makes it very hard for us to communicate about how they should be maintained and other things.
Sure.
I appreciate everyone staying excited about this fun topic. City Manager Davis.
Yeah, I think um, it, it, it seems like we're going in the right direction with, um, you know, really looking at some of those broad and clear areas. And I want to be clear that that's the intent of staff and that that's the intent of staff is to balance the input that they're getting from. The Open Space Advisory Board, as well as the input they've gotten from council over the past couple of years. And so, you know, I, I just, um, I just want to clarify that and. Um, you know, I think it's just disappointing to hear statements otherwise. And I think we, if, if council wants to move forward with this, I think this seems like the right process to look at what's clear and what you all can clearly agree upon. And we'll take that direction and where there isn't clear agreement, um, we can take those up at a later time.
Thanks, City Manager Davis. Can we go to the next one? All right, um, so the recommendation from staff is to hold off on this one?
Yeah, with the potential for the ballot initiative to go through in the fall. Uh, there could be major changes in this area, including a different access point for the golf maintenance shop as well as the underpass in this area. So, uh, and then in addition, Dillon Road has never been platted through this area. So making sure that we reserve the appropriate amount of right-of-way for any potential expansion of the roadway in the future. So there's just a lot of uncertainty in this area, so we are recommending that we hold off on zoning this particular area as open space at this time.
All right, thanks. Um, any comments from folks? So um, I was able to find the land dedication information on these lots and it looks like there's a large section of land. That you've left out that was dedicated as open space between Dillon Road and the purple line. That land was dedicated as open space um, in the Centennial Valley GDP. Um, so I think it's important to include it when you bring it back.
The area between the purple line and. Okay.
There's like, there's the Centennial Valley GDP that deals with that sliver and then there's a different GDP for the Coal Creek Ranch HOA. And for the business park that deal with the other properties. And that sliver that's between the purple line and the blue line was dedicated as open space. Any other comments on this one? Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, where's the underpass, can someone put an arrow on where the underpass is projected to come in?
I don't know if you can, do you see my cursor?
We can.
Yeah, it's kind of, it would be coming into the trail somewhere in this area, it's.
Yeah.
It's gonna be pretty long.
And just to be clear, an underpass can be built on open space, it's a trail. Any other discussion on this one? Okay, so we'll wait and see more, and when this comes back, it'll include all the dedicated open space. Can we go to the next one? Uh, so this one, um, the staff's recommendation is to defer on it as well? Is that right?
Yeah, because the right-of-way for ninety-six is. Yeah, because the right of way for ninety-six has not been platted.
So this one was one I feel like council gave pretty specific direction on, which included getting the right of way platted for ninety-sixth street. And zoning all the areas that are in green as open space. So I would recommend that that's the direction we continue on, like, that was the direction that we unanimously gave in twenty nineteen or whenever it was.
Yeah, I think we would need to bring forward a separate project in order to plat the roadway. So we can certainly work with staff and planning and public works in order to do that work. But in order to get these other properties. Surveyed, I think it would, it would slow things down for those, so we can work on this one on a separate track. But I do agree that the the direction on this one is is clear. We just weren't planning to move forward with the survey work that was necessary. On the green parcels at this time.
Okay, I don't, I I don't necessarily need to understand the project management side of it, but that this is the direction. Council to zone those as open space, I think is clear. Is there any debate on that? There is one area on this one that I do have a question about. There's that property that's sort of the shape of an arrow. That we got the right of way dedication for a street out of CTC or possibly a street at some point in time on one side of the tracks. But then on the other side of ninety-six where it pops under, it's really unclear to me, the ownership on that property. Can you illuminate us? And yeah, right where you are. You see that you didn't extend the green box into that triangular area?
Yeah.
It's not clear who owns that property?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what that property line is, but we can look, and we would, I mean, we would extend it to cover our entire property at that location. So I'm not sure if it comes to a point, or if it really does cut off at that location, but we would certainly include. You know, the entire parcel within that area in the open space zone district.
Great. Any other discussion on this one? All right, so this is also a prior, I mean, this is also something to come forward as an open space rezoning, but we understand it might come at a different hearing.
Okay.
Do you have another slide?
Lake Park.
Oh, so the direction from council on Lake Park that we, that. My recollection is, and that, you know, was my interpretation from the meeting minutes, is that council's not interested in rezoning Lake Park as open space. That we recognize that it was a park, so I didn't feel like the council packet accurately represented the previous comments.
When I looked back at the minutes, I just noted that there was some discussion about the master plan. So if if council can give direction that everybody believes that it's a park. Then we will move forward with a master plan in the future based on that premise.
Yeah, so I think the discussion, just filling in folks that weren't part of it at the time, was that people were interested in more park-like activities, like sledding and. Fishing and nature play, and they wanted more ornamental type features around the edge of Lake Park, like grass and ornamental trees that currently exist there. But people wanted just sort of like a natural park area that was more for like building forts and things like that. So there was a robust discussion at the Parks Board and the Open Space Board, and the Open Space Board felt like walnut open space was more of an open space. And Lake Park was more of a park, and similarly with the Parks Board, and. I think on council, we had some consternation if we were allowed to make that decision or not, and the attorney told us we could, and so that's where we left it. And we were happy to make Lake Park a park. So is there, if we could get get consensus and like document this on the record, I think it would go a long way.
How many times have we gotten this on the record? This is not the first, right?
So Councilmember Lee, if we could make a clear record of it, I think it would be good. So if you'd make some comments, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I I I think we have decided in the past, or we have made statements to the effect that. Lake Park is a park. Not open space.
Got it.
Any other discussion on Lake Park? So I just have some other. Comments on other properties. So if you look in the charter, it suggests that our responsibility as council is from time to time. To review the city parcels and determine if they should be zoned as open space. So I brought these up before. I'll try not to bring up too many tonight, but I think an important area to be looking at for the next round. Is along Dillon Road and eighty-eighth. There is, first of all, Dillon Road is not platted in that section of town. And so Dillon Road needs to be platted, and then we need to understand what the property is that's on the. I don't understand north and south right there in town, on the. On the Monarch side of the campus, but opposite the road of Monarch, so I guess what would that be? Southwest side of the corner, if there's south and west right there, there's a big piece of property that we own. That isn't platted, isn't clearly a property. It's partially in the county, partially in the city, like, the road is not platted. And it's not clear what that property is, although it looks and feels an awful lot like open space. So that's one that I think we should talk about in the future. And I think it's important to get the road platted.
Mayor, can you see the map that I have up on the screen now?
I see the Olson open space.
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing and then reshare just to make sure that. We know what property you're discussing.
Thank you. That's super helpful. Actually, you know what might be useful? I could go to the city land use planning map and share my screen.
Do that.
So, yeah, if you could pull up the city land use planning map, then you can see what I'm talking about, about the property boundaries.
Give you one more second.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I, visuals make a huge difference, so I think this was a good idea to pull up the map. Yeah, so not the property you're clicked on.
Okay.
One, just so like zoom in. Sorry. The, this is the Boulder County map, which is really good. Rob and Lisa have a city map. That's the land use planning map, that if you all don't know about it, you should spend time with it. Because you can click on a property, and then you get a link to the general development plan and the plat and the PUD and all these different documents. That's a really good one, too. But if you go farther to the west on this. And you zoom in, so there's that big piece of property right south of your cursor.
Sorry, I'm just gonna zoom in.
Thanks. And the kids take that route to school, and it connects to the underpass, and it's pretty natural the way we we maintain it. And I get questions. Often from the neighbors about what is this? Is it a park? If it's a park, why did you turn off the irrigation? Like, we used to irrigate the trees there. We stopped, they died. Why don't we trim the trees? Well, we're maintaining them natural because it's open space, except it's not zoned open space. And so it's this whole round and around and around, and the property doesn't have like specific borders or boundaries, and the street's not platted in this area. And you can see that, like, part of it is in the city and part of it is in the county. So this is a parcel that I would identify that we need to clean up and identify what it is and how we want, how we want to. Maintain it. So that's one for a future discussion, but that's one that is in need of help. Are there any other parcels other folks want to bring up that are issue parcels that community members have brought up? All right, I have one other one. So the Mayhoffer property that we acquired. If you go, if you don't mind, Nathan, moving the map over to the corner of Highway forty-two and Highway forty-two, kind of where forty-two Benzi's. So there's a big piece of land that is directly adjacent to the farm. On the corner that is not platted as anything. Yeah, well, so that one part of it is the park on one side. On the other side, that contiguous area to the open space, I think, should be maintained and managed. The same as the farm open space, so I think we should make that be open space. I think that's one for a future discussion, too, just identifying that that's one that I think we need to consider and understand. Any other pieces of property that people would like to identify and discuss? All right, seeing no one else, it looks like we have some, we should be able to get some coming forward in short order and some medium order, and then some longer term plans as well.
All right.
Thanks, Director Mosley. So that takes us through that agenda item, and our next topic. Is ordinance number eighteen seventeen, series twenty twenty-one, an ordinance approving the vacation of a hundred twenty-five foot by thirty point six foot. Wide right of way lying south of block of Lot nine, block ten, Louisville Heights subdivision in the city of Louisville, six oh one McKinley Avenue. This is our first reading. We'll set the public hearing for October nineteenth. I'll move that. We do that. Is there a second?
I can.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And next I move that we'll set the public hearing for ordinance number eighteen eighteen, series twenty twenty-one, and ordinance amending chapter five point oh eight of the Louisville Municipal Code. To authorize the local licensing authority to issue festival permits and to update statutory references in the chapter. In the, in that chapter, this is our first reading, and we'll set the public hearing for October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, everybody, and that takes us to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly, and that takes us to council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. Mayor Proton Moloney.
I just have one important thing. I want to talk about the city manager recruitment process. I did send the schedule out to everybody, and one thing I want to point out to you is the, what is called virtual or in-person interviews. Those are scheduled November seventeenth through November nineteenth, so I want to make you aware that those three days. When we will actually be getting a chance to talk to the candidate, the final, final candidates. And making some decisions. So those actual, what we will actually do during those days is to be determined. But I just want to make sure that you note on your calendar that is when we'll be spending a lot of time with this process. Any questions on that? We're meeting, Deb and I are meeting with the city clerk here soon. And we'll be working on a schedule so we can give more information to you, but I just want to let you know, those three days will be very important in the process. Thank you, Mayor.
Proton Moloney, Councilmember Dickinson?
I just want to compliment Chris Lee and Kyle Brown on your shirt selection tonight. You guys made a great choice. You look fantastic. It's a great look.
Good observation, Councilmember Dickinson. You all three look nice tonight. Very good. I just, I I had a future agenda topic to bring forward. We had previously discussed. That when the temperature cooled down, and I don't mean, I don't mean the actual temperature, I mean the heat of the conversation. We would bring forward a cleanup item on sledding, so that the rangers weren't. Confused about what we wanted from a practical standpoint on sledding in parks and open space, because when we did adopt the rules changes. We inadvertently excluded sledding. I wonder if council members have the appetite to add that to a future agenda before winter. I know that's a lot of additional effort. The more we can kind of specify tonight about what we're hoping for. Like, if what we're really hoping for is just staff to bring back deleting the prohibition of sledding in those two areas. That would be the easiest thing for us. Looks like a thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up. Okay, so that is specifically what we're looking for in that discussion, is an ordinance to come back to us that deletes the prohibition of sledding in parks and open space. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Yeah, I I'm wondering if we can have a a study session or a discussion item of some kind. Surrounding the whole issue of compost and recycle. And trash pickup at places that aren't single-family units in Louisville. So for multifamily buildings, for commercial, for retail, whatever. So that I've I've had a couple of residents comment to me that they live in a. Unit that doesn't provide the option to compost, for example. And so if we could have that discussion on how we could get them into our city program, or require them to have their own service or whatever.
Councilmember Fahy, I completely support the concept, and it is just, we need to have a lot of public input and process. And ensure that when we talk about trash, we're not opening up other ones, so we want to do it in a deliberate order. And there is a lot to talk about on trash that I think is coming in the next year or so. And so I'll add it to the running list of important topics for the twenty twenty-two work plan, which we're, we're gonna be talking about right around the corner. But I don't think we'll be able to realistically fit it in before the end of the year. But of course, the council can vote and try to add things. It's not to say I'm not completely energized and enthused. Okay, so we'll add it to the topics to discuss in the context of the twenty twenty-two work plan. Any other? Agenda items or council committee reports or updates?
Mayor, if I might, I just want to point out for everyone that next week's study session is being canceled because we don't have anything scheduled, so you have a guff.
How happy you made everyone. Thanks. City Clerk Muse, you're the best. All right, any other discussion topics for tonight? All right, seeing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.